Chair Bailey Douglas.
Are we on?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. We are kicking off our budget season. This is our first meeting. This is the first meeting for a couple of new counselors, so I just want to remind everyone, ask all the questions. This is a safe space. And it's nice to have new sets of eyes on things, too, because it flags things that maybe we look over, glaze over in years past, but we can have, continue to have conversations about them. And with that, I'll let Matt kind of give us a brief overview of where we stand at this moment, and then Helene will bring us into the budget.
Thank you, Finance Chair Douglas. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all this evening as we start this annual process of the municipal budget. As you know, in the budget packet, I provided a multi-page kind of executive summary for you to kind of look at the highlights and some of the key areas of concern or of focus within this year's budget. I have an abbreviated one for you this evening, as I know you probably all had the opportunity to read that. But I want to start off by saying a big debt of thanks to Helene de Bartolomeo as our Finance Director, as well as to Chris Boldick, our Assistant Manager, on the help that they gave me in the work on this budget, as well as all of our department heads and the work that they did to get us to this point. We start kind of early. You know, you almost, in many ways, start July 2nd, once you start the new budget, and make your adjustments as you go along. But hopefully, over the course of the next few weeks, we can go through and have a good substantive discussion and answer the questions that counselors may have regarding that. If we do need to have follow-up, we'll take those notes and try to get that information back and get it to all council members as we go through as quickly as we can and as completely as we can going forward. The big, one of the overarching goals of this budget is to ensure financial accountability and sustainability while still providing quality public services. This year's budget is designed as a level services budget, responding to the current economic climate and the inflationary pressures that are facing our residents, employees, and our operations. Some of the key highlights of the budget are that there is proposed municipal general operating expenditure of sixteen million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and that's an increase of five point seven percent over last year at eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and four. The general or non-property tax revenues are estimated to be at eight million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which is an increase of six percent. The net taxes to be raised would be seven million, five seventy-nine, zero sixty-eight, which is just over a five percent increase. Now, I will say that that is not taking into calculation any increase in municipal value at this point in time, because that's all to be determined when they go to commitment. However, that will reduce that level of impact as you go forward. So right now, that's as if it's a zero-based growth. So as the assessor gets his work done and new values added to that, ultimately, the calculation of a tax rate, as you all know and many may not, is that, you know, the top number is the net amount that needs to be raised, and the bottom number, which is what we're working on now, and the bottom number is the municipal valuation, and that's determined by the assessor on an annual basis. And so that's the number that still needs to grow. And so that will lessen that impact. So that five percent now basically is the highest point at which it will be. The net may be closer to three and a half, four percent, or even less, depending upon the amount of growth that goes in. On departmental staffing, there are no new staffing requests included in this budget. So there are no new positions. Some notable requests that were omitted. Fire and EMS had requested two additional firefighter and EMT positions. We're not including those at this time. And in the memo that I provided to the council, Fire and EMS have hired over the past few months four additional, or four new people that have joined the department, two of which were added at last year's final budget reconciliation meeting. So those two positions have been filled. And it's in my judgment that we need to see how the four people, quite frankly, come onboard, get integrated into the team, and figure out what the level of ability and level of service that they can provide are, and then, within a year, be able to determine how that fits with the overall operations of the department. So there were two positions requested, but I did not include those, and they're not in the calculations. There was one additional patrol officer that was requested on the police side. Again, on that, there's currently one position that remains unfilled on the PD side. So there are some, hopefully, some promising candidates, and we will hopefully get that position staffed. But again, with that, we'd like to look at that and say, when they get it full staffing, how does that work? And as you often know, some folks have a higher level of productivity than others, and you want to see who can handle what level of service is needed. So again, the same combination there. In Public Works, we're looking at one position, and Chris and I had the opportunity to talk about that, and currently, there are three positions that are open there, and we're looking to have those filled. And then, once we get, again, those positions filled on current vacancies, we'll check and see what their level of capacity is, and then adjust and make our best decisions going forward. So there's a bit of some questionable areas in there that we need to have filled, but it's not, the answer to that question isn't adding additional staffing to that problem. It's to find who we have and how they work and to the best way that they can be deployed. Current staffing levels will be evaluated after integrating them. And, oh, sorry, one other thing I left out. In the Clerk's Department, there was one vacancy, and talking with Jen Doten, the town clerk, we've decided at this point not to fill that position. So that position has been taken out of this budget. The thought is, you know, in big election years, such as the one we just came out of, there's a high level of work, there's a ton of volume, you know, you have primaries, you have all kinds, there's usually three, possibly up to four elections that may take place, or three to four votes that may take place within the course of the year. So this isn't one of those years. So what we're going to do is look at the staffing. And the current staffing level, the three folks we have working up front at the Clerk's Office do a great job, and they can hand, you know, it's Jen's position, and I would share it, is that the three staff members we have there now do a great job and handle the level of work that's there. So will it not be an election year, and we can supplement that in the future, but she felt that that was appropriate at this time. Looking at key expenditure categories, wages and salaries, you saw in the chart that was provided that that currently makes up about thirty-eight point three-five percent of the budget. That's our largest category. We are, in many ways, a people business, but we need people to do that, to do that work. So that's where that wakes out. But that's a three point one percent increase over last year. So there are contracted, within the wages and salaries, there are three collective bargaining agreements that are in there. All of those contractually have a four percent increase that are in there for this year, as well as staff. We looked at staffing increases, and we're looking at four percent. In the past, last year, I believe it was five percent, and it was greater than that even the year before. So this is one of the lower years we've had it, but consultation and discussion with, I would say, peer communities and other towns surrounding us, that's, they're in that range. I've seen, you know, from three up to six-plus percent that I've seen. Four seems to be where we're at in comparison to other similarly sized communities. Benefits make up fifteen point five-six percent of the budget. Increase this year is roughly four point eight percent, and that's primarily due to adjustments in health insurance and retirement contributions. We're not saying that the health insurance is going up by that amount. It's really a question of, and Finance Director de Bartolomeo can confirm this, it's a question of adjusting the amounts that were used in last year's budget to reflect the actuals. They were a little bit lower than what the actuals were going to be for this year, so they were under budgeted some in last year's budget. So we wanted to make sure that they reflected actuals, and that's why you see that there's an increase. Under contracted services, that's eleven point one-nine percent of the budget. That's an increase of twenty-one percent. That's driven in part mostly by dispatch. There's an increase in the cost for dispatch, as well as, again, an adjustment within the number that's within the budget, as well as we have a new maintenance contract with Siemens this year. That's an expanded amount of work that's done for municipal buildings, whereas in years past, we had Thayer Corporation doing a lot of that work, but Siemens has come in, and we've signed a contract with them to do that work. Now, under revenues, we need some funds to offset those expenditures. Non-property tax revenues are expected, as I said, to increase by six percent. Excise taxes, we are focusing on those increasing by about eight point three percent. Obviously, new cars are more expensive. If you've had, if you've been in the market for those, you unfortunately know that. But we've also seen that we wanted to get those to track closer to actuals than where we have been historically, so we've seen an increase there. Building permit revenues this year, we looked at those being down in the current fiscal year, but we're looking at those to increase in the coming year, because last year was a little bit more conservative. And we do know we have anticipated developments that will be coming onboard this year that should offset that. And then, we're also looking to increase rescue billing rates to be reflective of what the surrounding community is also charged. So we haven't had those adjusted in many years, but we're looking to have those adjusted in this current budget. Finally, one of the larger drivers, roughly seventy-plus percent of the tax rate, is related to the MSAD fifty-one annual budget. The school budget process is ongoing, and we encourage the community involvement to ensure that alignment with community needs. However, it's their budget, and as we receive more updates on that, we'll definitely bring that into the conversation as well as we can. And finally, county tax is another element of the budget and the tax rate process as it's set. We do know that the county budget is set, and thank you to Councilor Vale for his work and taking his opportunity to be at the County Budget Advisory Board level. But their increase is eight point three percent, and that is partly driven by county spending, but also driven by the town's state valuation went up by thirteen percent year over year. So that also impacts it. So that's allocated across all twenty-seven towns in Cumberland County, and it's distributed by value. So if our value increased, say, greater than Baldwin, Baldwin's number might go down, ours might go up because of the level percentage of increase that we found. So that was one of the drivers there, plus their normal spending. And then finally, I just want to, again, express my gratitude to all department heads for their contributions in developing this budget, and a special thanks again to Helene and to Chris for their exceptional efforts in helping us compile this work, as well as to Helene for the distribution of the document over Friday and Saturday. So we're happy to have. Any questions? But we are looking forward to working through the process with the council.
One question quickly, just clarification. The Siemens contract, is that year-over-year or is that one time?
Year-over-year.
Okay.
Are they going to fix the system in here? So we're not praising?
And Bob, go ahead.
I'm glad it, being brought Siemens up. I'm concerned about any contract with Siemens, you know, going forward. They use proprietary controls, and when you get locked in with them, it locks everybody else out. And so, you know, going forward to them, one of the things that we really need is either a town engineer or a shared engineer with the municipalities and the school system. But they need, not that they don't do a good job, but they need close watching, because it's a cost that gets out of control, and they want to put their equipment in, and then we find another, you know, contractor who can do the job for less money, and they say, I can't tie into this. It's proprietary controls. So that was my concern. Now, the other thing that I want to talk about was healthcare. I just, you know, if I, you know, when I was going through the numbers there, and I'm taking the number of men and dividing by the numbers, I said, holy cow, you know, ten to thirteen thousand dollars a year per man, per person, that's, you know, so it is a significant cost. I guess the thing to bounce out against is we need healthy people.
If I may, yeah, it's a great comment. I know that's, we have, as from an organizational standpoint, trying to work that reinvigorating our wellness program, for one, to try to get folks, a lot of this stuff took a pause during COVID. So we're looking at reinvigorating a lot of that efforts of the wellness program to get folks to, you know, work on their physical health, because a healthy and motivated employee is less prone to insurance.
Are we getting it through MMA?
We are still doing it through the marketplace. Well, not the healthcare marketplace, but through the open market with Harvard Pilgrim, who we're using. And our Experience Mod this year is excellent. So we will-
It's workers' comp.
No, it's, no, our health, yeah, health utilization is excellent. So we're, what would be described as a very attractive person, and one that they would, they're going to fight like heck to keep as a client. So that's why you might have noticed, in years past, you were looking at probably have like a five, seven, ten percent increase on health insurance. We're not anticipating an increase this year because zero to possibly less. If we, you know, we're looking to leverage that, I guess, good health to get the best deal that we can, because we are up for renewal. And so we are looking at, we've worked with our, worked with our insurance contractor to give us the best advice. So we're competitive. So if we need to go out to the marketplace, we will. But I know they, based on our conversations with her, they want to fight like heck to keep us, because we're what you call a good date, for lack of a better description. So that's a good thing.
Well, it's an area of concern.
Yeah, I know, on the school side, you'll hear, you know, because they're with the main municipal employees' health trust, sorry, the MEA Health Trust, they look at usually seven to ten percent increases. I know main municipal has been, in Cape, for instance, last year, we're looking, for this current budget, they're looking at seven-plus percent. So a lot of that general language has been there. So it's, looks competitive, but we, if we can find a better deal, we'll definitely, we'll prospect it.
Bailey?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Helene, a quick question for you. How long does, a couple of years ago, we had a lot of claims on health insurance, and how long does that experience stay on our, or affect us?
I think what you're thinking about is workers' comp. Workers' comp is every three years. They take your last three years. But for health insurance, it's your preceding twelve months. So right now, when we reviewed our, as Town Manager Sturgis suggested, our last review of our health insurance, our claims have gone significantly, have gone down quite a bit. So right now, we're looking at either, hopefully, a zero percent increase or, depending on what we're offered, we might go to the, go out for bid to see what else we can get out there.
Thank you.
If I may, Councilor Douglas, one last thing. I neglected to mention, and thank you to Helene for that, that you'll notice that red line right there, and it underlines, it's just a breakpoint in the paper, but it's, but it's a good spot to identify PFML. And that's not the name of a new boy band. It's actually Paid Family Medical Leave. And thanks to the wisdom of our legislature, that's the town's contribution to that. So what it does, you have to set aside one percent of salaries for each individual person. In this case, the town puts aside one-half of one percent, and the employee puts aside one-half of one percent each pay period. So that's to fund that, which is a program that may become available next year. We have to fund it now, because that's the law. I know there are, and there are a couple of bills underway in the legislature to look at revising that or possibly eliminating it. However, that's the law as we have right now. So you'll see that that's, and this is really the second year in the budget, because we budgeted for this year to come onboard effective as of January 1st. So this would be continuation of that as it goes.
I think Denise had one, and then you're next.
Hello? One of the revenue points was bags, and it was, you know, assuming, it is, well, it is including revenue for continuing the model, which we haven't decided on, I guess, completely, if it's in here, but that's two hundred forty thousand, so without the bags, that, you know, takes those revenues to about half of what are forecasted. So are we going to have that conversation before we proceed?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal.
Trash talk?
Trash talk, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to dive into that now, or you want to?
I just want to, I had one question. So there's been a lot of talk about tariffs, and I think Governor Mills said, what, eighty percent of Maine's heating, fuel comes from Canada. So I was just wondering, and obviously, that's kind of new news, right? So as we're working through this budget, do we, do we need to be kind of forecasting a little bit about what's going to happen potentially if materials go through the roof and fuel sources go through the roof? Is there any kind of recommendations on how we should be thinking about that or approaching that as we work through everything?
Actually, yeah. I mean, as we go through each of the departments, we'll be hitting those high points and kind of discussing what the budget includes and how we plan on, you know, presenting, and what was the thought process on how, why we increased certain areas and why we didn't.
Okay. Ron?
Just one thing on the wellness program. I think that's a good thing to get started again. I know pre-COVID, that we had a lot of seniors that worked in different departments that have now since retired, and we have a younger force. Chris, you know, I mean, the Police Department has a bunch of younger guys, Public Works. So I think the wellness program, I know years ago, it saved us a ton of money by people getting involved. So that's something that probably we should push. Surely remembers, I mean, COVID screwed everything out.
Sure did.
Awesome. Thanks. Any other questions before we could get to Helene? No? All right.
Okay, so just the overarching plan for our budget process is we're going to go through all of our expenses. So we're going to go department by department, go over, like I said, the highlights and the lowlights on those, each of the departments, and open it up for questions at each department level. Then we will, then, as we complete all of the expense budgets, then we'll move into revenue and have more discussion specifically on revenues such as the trash bags or permits and whatnots of some things that we're looking outside of the box on. And then, after that, then we'll kind of move into the TIF fund and kind of see how the net effect of the TIF fund has on everything that we've done with the general fund, because as you know, portions of what we do here in the operating account will also affect the TIF. And then kind of have an idea of what the TIF fund looks like on whether, based on whether or not what the council would like to do with the expiring TIF that's coming up. So what we'll do is we'll just go through expenses. Just to let you know, I put a packet in front of you outside of your binder, and what it's doing is giving you more of a summary look at each of the departments. I created a red line, and the red line divides between, on each of the departments, your wages and benefits, and then everything below the line will be everything outside of wages and benefits, which is operating. It kind of gives you a placeholder of where to look when you're looking at those percentages on the side. Your binder is available to look at some more of the detail of what's incorporated in those numbers. But what I'll try and do is kind of go over what are the things that we're seeing overall. As Town Manager Sturgis suggested, right now, overall, the budget for expenditure side, we're, throughout the budget, anywhere there is positions, we're looking at four percent across the board for all of our full-time employees. We're also had incorporated a three percent increase on health insurance. We had incorporated that prior to our meeting with the- We had incorporated that prior to our meeting with the health insurance company, or agent, because we weren't quite sure where we were going to be. So we wanted to be kind of conservative on that look. So as we get closer to where we anticipate to be, we can always adjust for that. Maine PERS, which is the retirement benefit that employees can choose, right now, Maine PERS is looking at a 0.3 to a 0.4% increase. 0.4 if it's for the safety employees, 0.3% increase if it's non-safety employees. And then as Town Manager also suggested, we had to include the PFML line, the Paid Family Medical Leave, which includes the half a percent that is the employer's portion. Last year, that was budgeted as a full number on a set aside. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. That's like the theme throughout. Some other adjustments too, that will look off from what it should be is because, again, we were trying to bring up our budget to actuals to be more in line where we anticipate to be for 2026. So with that, we'll start off with the admin and finance budget. That's in front of you. That's the 130. So this budget, this department is made up of the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, your Finance Department, and your HR Administrator that we have included in this budget. The majority of the changes is that we have one full-time employee going to a part-time position. So that's why you see your full-time wages drop about 17%. And then we had an added part-time line. We also slightly adjusted our membership dues. That was just because we had our incoming Town Manager have more, a different set of dues than our outgoing Town Manager. We also increased our postage. Our postage, so as you know, we've been having some inconsistent deliveries. And so actually, our Town Clerk went and spoke to the Postmaster, and they were suggesting that we would take out a P.O. box. And having a P.O. box would ensure us more timely of receiving our mail on time because sometimes we don't even get our mail on a daily. So this would ensure us getting our mail on a daily. This budget and on this department also includes, including HR consulting services for our contract there, and then a slight increase to our auditor fees.
Helene?
Yes.
Is that the HR consulting, is that the 0135, the contracted services for 50K?
Yes.
Okay.
Helene? What anticipated costs you perceive with the contracted HR services?
So currently, right now, she is ensuring that we are maintaining compliance with our, with, since we have our current HR position going part-time, this will cover the other half of what that position would have done in, as far as compliance for HR. I didn't know if you wanted to kind of talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, a good portion of the onboarding work that does take place. Offboarding, if you have, you know, if you have an employee that leaves you, as well as our health insurance work that does need to take place, making sure claims are adjusted. God forbid, there's an injury, but if there's a worker comp's, you know, first report of injury, making sure that compliance all takes place. So there's some of those elements there that, without having Brenda full-time where she could take care of that, kind of stepping into the breach on that. So it's not to exceed that amount. So if it's less, we'll look at, obviously, saving some money on that. But that's kind of the ceiling as to what we're looking to expend over the, over the course of the year.
So how do you envision this, Matt? Do you envision paying per week, per hour, per?
Usually it's, I believe she says it's a monthly, a monthly invoice from Range. Yeah, Range Consulting. So they'll, they'll look at what they have over the course of the month for, for time needed as well. And then there's other, there's HR issues that may come up if, if there's a disciplinary item that happens to make sure that you don't go afoul of perhaps if you need to do a laudemell hearing or something along those lines to make sure that you're in compliance, that it's less expensive than, say, for instance, using the town's attorney to ask some of those questions. So, but yeah, we look at that on a monthly basis is when she'll invoice us. And some times of the year, you know, open enrollment is a little bit more busy than, say, you know, now, for instance, this time of year, it's a little bit quieter. So, but looking to make sure that's, you know, we're in compliance with where we need to be.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So one clarifying question too. So the person under, I don't want to use names. So the executive assistant and then the PR clerk, HR assistant are splitting responsibilities for HR in addition to the, to Range?
Yeah, because what's happening is the current position that's under HR slash payroll, that person's more of the, right before it gets, that all that information gets to payroll piece, where we're using Range more for that very upfront type of stuff that happens prior to all of that getting to payroll.
Okay.
Is Range typically involved in the interview process?
As well as advertising and managing the applicant pools and think like, for instance, like with the three positions that we're looking to hire with Public Works, they'll maintain and manage that application process. So they kind of walks, you know, keeps that organized as well for departments. And that's, in a sense, some of that too, we're trying to feel that out still, you know, with Brenda being here part-time and still kind of figuring out what's going to be the best model for that. And we may find that it's, it could be lesser over the course of the year. So I think we'll, we'll adjust as, as that goes. But that's why we look at that as kind of be in the, the top end of what that expenditure may be.
I could be wrong, but I don't know that this is... I feel like we budgeted this in FY '25. And I want to say it was 30,000. I don't know if it's living somewhere else, but.
Where are you?
For the contracted services. Not that it, I don't know that it matters, but I vaguely recall it being a conversation during our budget meeting last year. But I don't know.
Yeah, if it was, then it was never, you know, added to the line.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this section?
I have a question that it's not really, well, it's kind of like a background question.
Yeah.
Looking at underneath, you know, office supplies, travel, and then there's council projects. What, these like travel for out-of-town meetings, what is that exactly? And why did it used to be so much? And now it's just 5,000? And what is the 5,000 for? Who's traveling out of town for meetings?
Well, travel is the line above it, and then council projects is the line below it. So they're kind of two different things.
Okay, the description of council projects is travel for out of, oh, it's the same. It's the same description. That's why. So yeah, I guess I'm wondering what those projects are.
In many ways, they're as, as defined by council throughout the course of the year. Council cop's laughing because he, he knows how those, all of a sudden, sometimes they evolve out of a council meeting that.
And he has to fly to Augusta.
All right.
There is that. But if there, if there's something that the council says, well, we need to have this done and get this done quickly, then we'll try to get a project done. And then if there, and then sometimes there may be staff may need to travel. So there could be, there could be that as well for reimbursement for, for fuel expenses, miles that may take place. That's a bit of a, of a catch-all when it comes to some of those items.
Yeah, and sometimes too, like when we, when there was the council, the council intro for the new council, and we brought Range Culture in to do some analysis for us and things like that, that would be included in that line.
Okay, thank you.
And part of that too is we do have a courier now that does some of that work for us. So we don't, we don't have to pay for folks to, and that would be in some of our bank fees as well now. But that kind of migrated from there to there because we used to pay. Prior Finance Director used to drive deposits, or a staff member would drive deposits over to Yarmouth to go to, you know, Bank, to TD Bank over there to take care of that. That was something we stopped last summer and hired a courier, A, because they're bonded, it's insured, and it's just good business.
That's a good reason.
Yeah, it's just good business.
So Matt, that was sort of going into my next question, which I appreciate. The bank fees were between 1400 and 1500, and then FY '25, there were zero, and now we're back up to 15. Is the courier, like, how were we able to avoid that 1500 last year? And then why are we bringing it back this year, I guess is the question.
It wasn't budgeted last year. The number just wasn't put in there to fit that. But if you notice, the year before, like, 5,530 dollars were, or actually, current year expenditures of 5,530, it's been about 1500 in the past.
Sorry, did you catch that? I was distracted here. So the bank fees are new because we weren't, we weren't historically having a courier deliver money to the bank. We were having someone uninsured drive the money to the bank.
Right.
And so Matt implemented having a courier because it's bonded for insurance.
And there were some, and in the current year, there were some bank fees that had been incurred over the course of the first part of the year that, you know, if you weren't maintaining a certain level of balance in accounts, you would have to pay a fee on that as well. Some of those have changed since, have changed over the course of the year, I guess would be a good way to put it.
Go ahead, Bob.
So one of the things that I, I look at here and going through it, and in fact, I've got all my old books at home. So I can, I can go back and, you know, and review multiple years there. But, you know, if I look from last year to this year, it's not much of a change. But if I look, and I saw that pretty much consistent throughout the whole budget thing. If I look, you know, two, three years ago, so I see significant changes and so benchmark trends. And I would say, okay, in three years, we're, we're, you know, 30% greater. And anyways, I think that's, it's something we should be paying attention to as a group. And, you know, when, when things get out of line, we shouldn't just look at the change or the lack of change from last year, but, but benchmark it against a five-year period or a seven-year period or something so that we say, I think, I think that's prudent planning. I'm not a financial guy, but I know that when I look at that and I say, okay, you know, you know, the cost of a new truck has gone up 5% this year, it's 5% last year, oh my God, you know, it's, in 10 years, it's doubled. More, just a comment more than a question.
Couldn't agree more, Bob. I said, I couldn't agree more. I was actually hunting around for old binders the other day. So good to know you have them.
I got them all.
I'll be bye. Great. Do we want to move on to 140?
140 is our assessor. So the, really, the biggest change here with the assessor is we're just adjusting for the change in, changing of the guard. As you know, we have a new assessor, Quentin, Clint, who has taken over our assessing. So this is more adjusting the expectation of costs associated with having him now in that position.
Have a question?
Go ahead.
And this is kind of what Bob was just talking about, kind of like the trends and sort of continuity. Looking at the assessor maps, it seems like, is this corresponding with some task that has to be done only certain years? Because it'll be like 4,000, nothing, 8,000, you know, nothing. Now 5, 5,700. So can you explain that one?
I'd be happy to. My, my, what you look at is they probably were putting off to every other year doing the assessor maps updates.
Okay.
And it's just, just changing the base map. So if there was a split or a creation of new lots, that's, that's what you're doing. So it may also be part of that. You may print them every other year as well. But 57, that seems, I mean, you have the G.I.S. updates that have to take place every year. And so a lot of that's pushed online as well, but it's, so you get that work done. But then also to actually do the hard copies is, is part of that. But my guess is every other, other year is how they've approached that.
Okay. One other thing, just for clarifying, the wage adjustment for FY '25 to FY '26 going down, is that because, I think I briefly recall, but there was maybe a portion of his wages being pulled out of TIF? Is that right?
There is, however, the salary as well is less than what the prior assessor was earning by about, by about that amount.
All right, great, thank you.
Didn't we have a gap in, in staffing also?
Yeah, we did. On the, on the actuals, yeah, that will be, impact your actuals there. That we did have a savings for about, about that eight weeks almost that we were out of pocket. So we'll have a savings at the end of the fiscal year.
Actual, like.
The actual saving will be, will be a little bit greater than the, just the change in, or difference in revenue or difference in salary, sorry.
So this is just sort of a curiosity. Contracted employees, it's a new line and it's zero?
Where do you see that?
14, 0141, contracted employees, you know, it's just sort of nothing in '23, '24, '25, '26. Zero change, but it has, you know.
She's going through this copy here, not this copy here, and it's not, it's not in that, that line isn't in there.
Sorry, I was just.
The copying thing or?
Yeah, it was just a line that I guess was there previously.
Yeah, in the past, the assessor may have contracted someone to help with pickup work to go out and say, do measure listing of buildings that may be out there. So I think that's a historical line versus one that's actually being employed right now.
And sometimes in finance systems, when you add a line to a cost center, it like reflects the same line in every, everything, no matter what.
I was wondering if it was more of that or something else was missing.
That's why there's no 150-year-old people collecting social security.
Awesome. Any?
Question?
Go ahead.
This applies to all the payroll, just, and it seems mostly, I don't know if it's TIF related or like the rate versus the annual cost versus the budget, the difference there, is that because it's coming from TIF partially?
Yeah, there will be some areas where, and then we get into TIF later, you'll see where there's a contribution side of that that is, you know, in line with TIF.
Is that usually a fixed percentage or does it vary per position?
Yeah, fixed percentage.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're trying to do is show you what the full cost of an employee is, and then what that portion is going to, how much of that's going to affect the department. So we'll move on to the page three, which is the Town Clerk. As the Town Manager suggested, in the Town Clerk's budget, the budget went down overall because the Town Clerk made it a recommendation of going from four full-time clerks to three full-time clerks. So that is, oops, adjusting that, as well as then there's a slight increase for telephone. The Clerk's office has, maintains a copper line for the fax machine. So, you know, that service cost went up slightly, as well as she made an adjustment to her codification line to be more in line to what actually ends up being spent from year to year on her codification. So she was trying to be more consistent on that, on that cost.
Do we get a lot of faxes?
You know, surprisingly, yes.
I would love to get the data on that.
Yeah, and it's only in the clerk's offices. And oftentimes, it's because it's vital records and it's secure. So like if you're using, like if you're scanning something on a copier, that, we try to make sure there's a level of security on that. But the fax is the most secure when it comes to that, like vital records, like death certs, birth certs, things along those lines. The occasional, the occasional insurance card might even come in to the town office via fax, so.
We actually looked that one up in, on the telephone bill.
Yeah.
And it's, they're mostly from the state of Maine, sending us information.
Oh.
And that's, you know, like.
Yeah.
Matt said it's the most secure way to send information without it being intercepted.
Okay. Denise, I think you. Denise, I think you had a question, and then Bob and Tig.
I should know this. Is the comp plan ending in fiscal year twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? So.
Anticipated twenty-six.
So, with the codification increase, is that also taken into account potentially, you know, different ordinance changes that will have to come from that? Or is that, you think that's going to go over that, depending what they come up with?
Every time, Councilor Thorston, that's a great question. Every time an ordinance is changed, the codification has to be changed.
Sorry.
So, that's why, that's why, you know, and some years are busier than others, and, you know, it just happens like that. So, that's, that's really to reflect that more than, more than anything, to make sure that the record's accurate. So, a person who may be using that as a resource doesn't come in and expect, you know, expect that they can do X with their property and find out that that was forbidden three months ago. So, there's that, that side of it. So, it has been more, and like I said, some years are, have a higher volume than others.
Okay.
That was, that was kind of, you know, a different way of going where I was going. If, if the audits committee or the planning board passes ordinances, is there cost savings to say, we will only change it every six months? In other words, we don't, we shouldn't, okay, the audits committee met every month, and they, they put forth a new ordinance, there's, there's, now that I've read through this, there's a cost involved with that. So, does it make sense to say, okay, even though the council's passed it, we will not go into effect but on June or January? Is there, is there any cost savings in that matter?
Can you do them in bulk?
Potentially, like, for instance.
Isn't that what we want to do?
I'm not sure, but I, when I saw that there was a cost, and I hadn't really considered it before, I said, okay, well, am I, am I missing an opportunity to save money, or is it, doesn't make, it's a dime, am I, am I, am I saving pennies instead of looking at the dollars?
You are, but it's something.
Like a solo one that we just went through, that we didn't pass the ordinance? I mean, obviously, we saved some money because we weren't quite satisfied with the ordinance.
Right.
So, that, therefore, I mean, we, we need to make sure of what we're doing before we just pass an ordinance.
But I was wondering if we should get a group of them together and say, all right, well, we're not going to, we're not going to hire the town attorney to put this into print until we have half a dozen of them.
If, if you could cluster them, I think you would find that volume discount would be, would be found. But again, sometimes, you know, you go on a run that, you know, you have a number of items that pop up, and other years, you might not, you know, you may not have to make that many changes. So, but if you can cluster them together, and you'll notice on, well, you will notice, I'm presuming that Thursday night's ordinance committee moves a number of things together, you may have three or four items that might be ready for action at the, on the twenty-fourth, at the council meeting, that then, you know, you might be more efficient at that point by having three or four items that could, that could make that change. But, yeah, if you could, if you could cluster them, the other, the other thought is, if you, depending upon the urgency by which ordinance needed to be recorded and changed, you could wait a little bit of time to do that, make it effective as of July one and do it then.
Date is such and such.
Yeah, but if you had something that you needed to respond to, an issue that was happening, and you wanted to get that in there, you know, once that ordinance has been voted on, it becomes law thirty days later, effectively, so.
So, even if it's not codified, so say, we made some changes around pole-mounted solar, people would have thirty days and can put in as much pole-mounted solar as they want before it becomes law?
It would be based on what the ordinance said at the time that they wanted to do it. So, if they wanted to, you know, some, I guess it depends upon which side of the, which side of the road you're on. Some, it may be a benefit to one, or it may be a detriment to the other. So, you, that's, that's on a case-by-case basis to decide how it's best implemented.
Yes, can I?
I have one question, it's a small, small amount, but advertising, is that for elections? Uh, sorry, line, oh, uh, zero, one, five, three, thirty, ten.
It's going to be for elections, it's going to be for liens and foreclosure notification, all those sorts of things that she has to advertise for.
And is it just knowing that the forecaster is going out of print? I was just wondering if that makes any kind of impact?
Yeah, we, we look at probably, you know, Press Herald at that point in time, whatever, not to be completely flip, whatever remaining print publications are sitting within the local market, we would reach out to them.
Got it.
So, you'd have to find a, you know, and that's generally how the law reads, is that it needs to be.
Drop a note.
Well circulated.
That's wild.
Yeah, but you have to meet the intent of the law to say that you need to advertise that within X amount of days, and there's certain, you know, as, as Helene said, if it's, if it's a lien notification, if it's, you know, if it's, if it's an ordinance change, it's, if it's a public carrying, things along those lines, that the, that the clerk is responsible for, for advertising, then we'll try to meet that, the law.
But if all the papers are going bump, which many of them are, where are you supposed to be advertising responsibly?
I'm sure she's keeping up with probably MMA, or somebody who will make a recommendation to change the advertisement.
Yeah.
Until then, you know.
Yeah, because you can't look at the forecaster without paying.
Or you can. You can post them in a highly visible loca, there's like some archaic language that's like a highly visible location. Basically, you could put it up at the post office, the library, and the town hall, and that might meet, meet the requirements as well. But then you have to try to find a, find a way to, you try to find a way to meet the law's intent as best as you can, and that needs to pass the straight, straight face test.
Any further questions on this section? Moving on to one sixty.
So, one sixty is our technology. Also, it's our TV camera crew. So, we are actually increasing the budget for our part-time wages, because for some reason, last year's didn't really meet what we anticipate the cost would be for our camera and technicians. And then, we also increased our licenses, so this upcoming year, we will be including a contract with ClearGov. It would allow us to actually have a more formal process with our budget process, make it all electronic. I don't know if you know, but like, even before this gets to the department heads, it takes about two weeks to get the data up to date, so that they have current information to review before they submit their budgets. And it makes it a very cumbersome process. Getting ClearGov involved will make all of that seamless, where everything happens within one program. It will allow us to have more transparency with, on our website, as to what exactly what the budget looks like, and provide us, provide like, very good information for the public to go in and look at anything they want to pinpoint on our budget process.
When, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
When you're done.
So, just for clarity, Munis is remaining? This is just like something that sits on top of Munis, or is kind of like a plugin, or how does?
Correct. So, Munis really is just our financial system that allows us to operate within our accounting functions. This ClearGov is more of assisting with the budget process. There's not really, Munis doesn't really have a budget process, so that we can provide the type of detail that we give you in these binders, and this ClearGov program will allow us to do that. We're also making it seamless for us to work with the department heads to get that budget ready.
Okay. And is the Munis training annually, or just one time?
Yeah, here, Munis training. Every year, we look at changes in the module, so there's always an update that happens. For instance, one of the things we're actually expanding on is going to a more of an ESS, Employee Self-Served.
Yeah.
Process, so that's going to require additional training. We're also looking at going online with the clerk's office, so that you can pull your bill off of the website and pay it online, and not even have to come into the office. So, we're trying to expand and, and really utilize the accessibility that Munis gives for us, to our customers outside, for that access to information. So, that's, that's where that five thousand dollars is coming in, because between the finance department and the clerk's office, we really want to kind of really dig into more of those features that Munis provides.
Okay. Denise?
Two questions. First, with the ClearGov, are they going to ingest all the old records so that we can have like, the, you know, trends from the past? Or is it going to be starting, you know, now and forward? ClearGov will make our stuff digital?
Well, what happens is I'm going to have to work with them and implement basically all of the information of the data that's in Munis, and then we get to a point, but yes, it will have all of the actuals that, kind of like how you see it now, but it'll all be in this one module.
Cool. Second, there are four things on here that I can't find a description for in the bottom. FleetSoft, ESO Solutions, EIG Constant, and A3 Communications. What are all of those for?
So, you said, sorry, say it slower, please.
FleetSoft, ESO Solutions, EIG Constant, and A3 Communications.
So, I know A3 Communications is for the police department. It's the locks and the cameras, the security.
Is FleetSoft for parts management, Chris, in the Public Works? So, yeah, FleetSoft is, is worked at Public Works, if you want to look at parts management or other equipment management that you want to have. So, it's kind of like a, an inventory management programming.
Domain registration.
And ESO Solutions, do you know that?
That one, I can't. I'll, I'll have to get back on ESO, ESO Solutions on that one.
And EIG Constant?
That as well. Let me, I can work on both of those.
Mystery Licensing.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, one more thing. The domain registration, five hundred dollars is nuts. Is that going away once we're on dot gov? Because that's free, right?
Yes, it's, we're in the process of doing that, but we may, we may have that one year transferability.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also believe that domain registration is also for Valhalla as, as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob, I think you were first.
Just a comment, and then another question. I'm not interested in spending a lot of money on our website. Our website, to me, should be how to get the phone numbers, how to find the updated ordinances, but I don't think it should be an encyclopedia, you know, for everything that's ever transmitted in the town's history, you know, I just think we got better places to spend our money. So, I'm not, I'm not in favor of dumping a lot of money towards what happened years ago. My question, though, is cable. What do we get from Spectrum? Once a license renewal, how often is a license renewal, and, you know, I know in years past, that's how we, we got, we got TV to the school, we got TV, you know, we got online at the town council level, and then it went to the school, and it was by negotiating with the, with the cable companies. So, we still actively wanting to get something from them.
Sure, and we do generate revenue on an annual basis. I almost dated myself, I was going to say Time Warner cuts us a check, Spectrum cuts us a check annually, should be right around this time of year, for, you know, for revenue from the, I guess you could say, the cable. Yeah, let's see. Yeah, franchise fees, so that should be coming along. It's an annual revenue that the town receives. Oftentimes, that money is implemented towards offsetting the cost of operating, you know, it falls into the general fund, but it's aimed towards cost of operating, you know, Cumberland Television Station, as well as there's some equipment upgrades that take place, and we did some, there was a pretty tired piece of equipment that Sarah worked on installing this past year. So, I would try to put that investment right, right into that as well. But they do, on that, on an annual basis, cut us a check. We are getting close to the end of that franchise agreement. So, before, before we got together this evening, I was actually, was chatting with Sarah about, about that. So, I just, I know a number of our, a number of towns in Cumberland County were on a similar track, and I can't remember if it was this year or next year, or, or if we're two years out from that expiring, but a number of towns are all in the process of, and many of, many of which were looking to do that together, to try to find the best negotiating position to do it, because it's, you know, it's funny, there's, there's cord cutters, you know, which, you know, many of us are cord cutters, but you're paying the same amount or more sometimes if, and, or you're subscribing to them with, you know, their internets, you're getting an internet subscription through Spectrum. So, there's, you know, one way or the other, that's kind of, that's kind of out there. So, but it's changed their model of what they cut us for a check. You know, in years past, it might have been one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, and that number's come down, but I think it's kind of stabilized too. So, it's just a question of, of getting the franchise agreement to agree, and make sure it's in the town's best possible terms for us.
Well, if you wanted to poll the residents, I can tell you Spectrum is a terrible, terrible service.
You can go across the country, and whoever the cable provider is, is probably the leader in customer dissatisfaction.
I turn the TV on seven days a week, three days a week, it'll work.
Ron first.
Matt answered my question, so I'm good.
Okay, then Tiggers.
Sorry, Bob, I know you're not excited about the website, but there is a new law around WICAC compliance and ADA accessibility, and that's something that legally we have to start looking into. And so, I was just curious, from a budgetary perspective, if, and I know we've got a little bit of runway because of our population, right, versus the city of Portland, like, like laws to the extent that your parking meter has to be a certain type of font size, so that people can see it, read it, you know, accessibility across the board. I think we have until end of twenty twenty-seven, is it, for Cumberland based on size?
I think that's right. I know Whitney and I are working, getting together with our provider this week to talk to them about it. If we can do something in the nearer term, we will, because it's, that's not going to change.
Yeah.
And I think the website needs a refresh, as far as, I know, Councilor Thorston's brought up a couple different times over the past few months, some concerns, and there's areas that we can improve on, and I think, I think that's just, you know, there's the ADA compatibility, but there's also relevance of some of the information that we have on there, and just, you know, they have a certain lifetime, and there's a question of that. And then, so we're looking at trying to do that. If we can do something in the near term, we will. We will try to deploy it sooner rather than later. And hopefully, we'll improve traffic as well, and make it easier for people to navigate within it, because, Councilor, to your point, it's, you don't want something that's really confusing, you're going to get like seven clicks to get to where you want to be. You should be there within three at best. And so, it's a question, because people, you know, either timeout, or you, you get fatigued, or you get frustrated, and, and you just bail and say, well, it's going to be easier just to pick up the phone and call. And sometimes, that's not handy. So, that's kind of why we're looking at that as well, to improve end-user satisfaction. And then, to the question on ClearGov as well, if you get a chance, and I won't often direct you to another town's website, but Gray has taken on ClearGov, they've done the work over the past six months, the reporting on it is pretty amazing. I mean, the stuff it generates, and to make it easier for people to look at and understand what's going on with their budget, you know, with their money, quite frankly, and it, it really puts it out there clear and cleanly for folks to understand, and they can get a hold of it and get understanding, and it's, Mike Foley sent it over to me, and what, what they were doing in Gray, and, and that's kind of where we'll be. And the work that Helene does, and to push that into there, it'll make it a lot, you know, historically, you can look at that, the message that you want to put out there to folks, make it easier for counselors to understand what, what you're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish with the town budget. I think it'll be a vast improvement for, in a lot of different ways, for really short money when it comes to it.
And Bob, I think a lot of site traffic is likely driven by lack of accessibility on the website. Like, it's very challenging. As someone who's fairly tech savvy, I get frustrated by it. So, I think with increased, like, ability to move easily in there, I think we'll see more site traffic. And I also think, as newer counselors, like, you've been here for a pretty substantial amount of time, and you have a lot of historical knowledge. For someone like myself, or Denise, or Andrew, we don't have that backlog, so it's, we're really depending on what we can find. So it's, we're really depending on what we can find for notes, what we can find for minutes, you know, links to videos, to find reference points. And I think we're at a day and age where we can't any longer, you know, just rely on someone remembering something. We have to have stuff to point back to, just from a legality perspective. So I know you don't love it, but bear with us.
I don't disagree with what you say.
Yeah.
Council Douglas, the other part about the Munis work as well. If we can get that customer self-service out there as well on the website, so folks instead of, I'll talk about this in my manager's report in about an hour, but mail's been a tough commodity to come by in Cumberland for the past.
I get it once a week.
Six weeks.
Yeah, it's brutal.
It's been brutal. And folks, you know, we've sent property tax bills on it, and it took a long time for those to get out. And people are upset about that, and rightfully so. And if you're, you know, if you're, if you are looking to find your tax bills or, you know, other things that are out there, if we can have that out there and people can generate that on their own, at least know what they're looking to, or you can have a reminder sent to you if you do an email, subscription, or things along those lines. It's, we're looking to make it easier for folks to get the information that they need. And they don't have to wait until Monday for the town office to open up to find out. And so we're just kind of, that's a really good product that as well out there. And it's, we've already got the, you know, majority of that already, part of what we do is just expanding that level of service so folks can do it. But it really hit home these past few weeks to see just, you know, if you're waiting for social security checks or anything along those lines, people are beside themselves and rightfully so.
One, oh, go ahead. I don't know where this would go in the budget. I'm guessing technology, but maybe not, maybe more like contracted services. But I know we had talked about the website refresh and possibility of an intern doing it. And I really think we should invest in an actual, like, professional person with a track record. Because the website really needs to be like reorganized on like the site map level, like for organization and stuff like that. And I worry that if we went with an intern, because it's cheap and it's a learning experience, then you end up having to come back later and pay more, or pay something to get it in right. So I don't know at what point that needs to be discussed, but I think it does warrant a conversation about that.
We agree.
Okay.
And I'm not using the royal we, I mean, we agree with you on that. And we're looking to get that done, like I said, in the near term, more so. And I'll be able to report better after we get a chance to meet with them this week, so, as well.
Where does that stuff live? Like, where does the fees for our email marketing system live? Vote Now, that stuff?
Under TIF.
Under TIF, okay.
To be continued on that side.
All right, great. Any more, oh, go ahead.
Matt, with all these discussions about website and all, looking at, you know, backing up all this data, you know, we've got under contracted services, it shows backups for Town Hall and Library. Nothing for anything else, police, Public Works, Fire, Gulf, et cetera. Is that because it's all, that all falls actually under the Town Hall for that? Or are we just not backing up?
I think it would go through our server, doesn't it, Helene? Yeah, we have the servers here.
Okay, so that falls under us and that's why it's not. And then, you know, in terms of just protection of cyber, it's not necessarily an if, it's more of a when, you know, the town gets hit with something, some sort of cyber attack of that, making sure that we've got that, you know, locked down and we're prepared.
Yeah, that's with our contract with Ion, who does our IT work for us. And I just met with them last week and discussed their, you know, I guess you could say the universal services that they provide for us. One of the things that they do on a periodic is a penetration test that I just learned about. Unfortunately, those are things you gotta learn about today. Gorm recently had a cyber issue. Schools ran into it with their school dude software, got, you know, got nailed pretty hard earlier this year. So, you know, you do things like that, penetration tests. We do test training for staff. They also maintain our firewalls. And as recent as this morning, I got an email letting me know about someone who had tried to get through, so they give us an award. Sorry, a notification of when someone has tried to get in with a cyber attack. So we get all that on a fairly regular basis. But it's front of mind, especially now. But yeah, you know, one of the areas that we do, we do have cyber insurance that, you know, in theory protects us. But a big part of that also is having staff do the training that they need to do as well to avoid phishing and.
It's a number one.
Yeah, and that's, and, you know, we go through our little no before training that's important to do. And I make sure that I, you know, I make sure that I try to do it and reinforce the department has to do it as well, as well as staff, because that's the area that they find penetration in, is through that phishing and was it mashing? And a couple other ing terms out there, but we want to make sure that we're front of mind with that as well. But Ion does a great job for us and they provide that tech service. Well, they hear it three times, three days a week, but they're really 24/7 on that as well.
And then we put all of our, all of these videos up on YouTube, right? And I'm not familiar enough with YouTube to know like where the cutoffs are. Do we get any ads off of that? Or are we not big enough, you know, don't have enough views to get ads? I mean, it wouldn't be that much revenue, but.
No ads, no ads.
You don't want car sales against these?
No.
You know, I will always support that, Andrew. I'm trying to sponsor the Town Hall.
I think we just need to improve our content.
You need to have like 10,000 views on a video, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I know that there's a cutoff. We're probably not even close to that.
No, got like 17.
What if like 100 people watch the video? That's like a banger of a meeting if there are 100 views.
We can work on it.
All right. Be better, Andrew.
We got goals.
All right, any more questions on 160?
160.
Yeah, 160, before we move on to 165. Elections? No? All right.
So Elections, again, is part of the responsibility of the Town Clerk. This is her budget anticipation. She's, part of her salaries included in this as well as what she anticipates her needs will be for election workers for the upcoming elections during our fiscal year '26 time period. So you see the amount went down because it's not a, you know, we don't have a major election in '26. So we did bring that number down for that.
Quick question, Billy. Matt, how does our pay for our Town Clerk compare to the surrounding municipalities?
I think we're at market. Yeah, I think we're overall at, yeah, at or at market.
I just want to make sure, she does such a great job.
Home run hitter on a daily basis, Mike.
Yeah.
Definitely, Council Reed, so sorry. Yeah, she definitely, we're very glad to have Jen and.
I'm gonna say.
Big time. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thanks for asking.
While we're on the topic of pay, reducing staff from three clerks, or four clerks to three clerks. Is there, it feels like probably the workload is still the same, we just have really good people? So has there been any conversations surrounding leveling their pay up since their workload is more? Or how is that conversation then? Or is there any?
We haven't had any. Staff was actually, they're in, they were in support of this change as well. It's a question of providing enough work on a day-to-day basis that they all feel engaged. And we've got a really good team there that has just, you know, you can see them advancing in a lot of ways. So it's been, yeah, staff was in support of that decision as well.
Okay.
But we will keep that in mind as well. If there, I mean, if there's opportunities there, for sure, we want to maintain. Want to maintain and keep good.
Yeah, I think it's easy. I work in a business where they just want you to do more for less. So I just want to make sure we're being cognizant of a shift in employment.
Come work with me, I'll show you.
Yeah, exactly. I'd like to avoid exploitation of these employees, that's all.
But on the other side, just want to point out that we're also looking, Jen's looking at making a lot of the information available online for that piece too, so you kind of have.
More efficiencies.
So in the binder, there's a little bit, you know, some explanations for like other expenses. And for programming and elections, it talks about what those costs includes. And then at the end of it, it says new machines to be released at this point in time, the cost is, and it gets cut off.
Council, I'm giving that, thank you for asking that. That's been a conversation, let's see, for a decade plus. Secretary of State's office has been planning to replace the machines that we all know and love on an annual basis for about a decade plus. They have not made that change yet. So you could probably pick up any town in Maine and their Town Clerk's budget and see that they probably have a similar line, because we've been waiting for deployment of the new equipment. And, yeah, waiting for that white puff of smoke to come up the chimney to find out what the new equipment's gonna be, quite frankly. I think they actually have chosen two popes in the time period that we actually have been waiting for that new equipment. So, yeah, it's a tough one. It's who's, you know, waiting to see who the vendor's gonna be. And it's been, the old machines are battle-tested, but they're ready for a refresh.
The word cutoff on that is unknown.
Okay.
Rest my case.
Next department is Planning, 170. So here again, the Planner, we have her 50/50 with the TIF fund. So previous years, we had a Town Planner that was sort of part-time, not very part-time, but 20 to 30 hours depending on what was going on. Our Planner now is full-time, so we obviously adjusted the budget to reflect not actuals, but what we anticipate for our current Planner. She did a slight decrease on the advertisement because she realized that some of the advertisement is reimbursed from applicants. So, sorry about that. So there, she did a slight decrease on that line. And then there was an increase on the travel and training. And this is due to our current planners a lot more involved with associations and as well as planning on doing some more educational association organizations. So we needed to do a slight increase for those lines.
Yeah, go ahead, Denise.
Are those trainings and education something that's required of this position, like licensing or certifications? Or is that just like for fun? Because it is, you know, like a 700% increase or something, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I would say that she is planning on taking some university-level courses to get her degree up. So this is, that's being inclusive of that.
She's been grabbing courses at Muske, Muske School for Public Policy and Management.
Is tuition reimbursement something we give to all employees?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions about 170?
Next cost center is 190, our legal fees. This is all outside legal consulting. We tend to just go ahead and budget the same amount year to year as, we cannot really forecast what the expectation for expenses are. So we try not to base our budget on trends, as you know, it's not gonna be the same from year to year. And as you can see, some years, three years ago, we were at 52, but two years ago before that, we were at 33. So we felt keeping it at 47.5 was still reasonable for the budget.
This might be a controversial statement, but I think it concerns me a little that we're spending, where last year we spent 87K on consulting services for HR, and our legal fees are almost half of that. And I think it's more so, it's not concerning, but it's more so then we also have a portion of people's roles being a part of that. So how much are we spending on HR services? And should it be a conversation about bringing someone in-house versus paying that volume of money for an outside?
Was part of that, we spent, I think, or I would imagine the hours for hiring a new Town Manager that they put in, because that was something that we couldn't do internally, right? Like, do we know if that's part of the reason why it's kind of spiked a little bit?
Is that, Matt? Do you have thoughts?
I think we have some personnel, major personnel issues.
In this past year, I think we may have a bit of an anomaly.
Okay. I'm just throwing it out there. When I start to see things creep into the $100,000 range, I start to ask the question of myself, of should that be someone internally, which I also have the debate of, like, I don't necessarily think it's great someone internally is managing HR functions, because I think it's too small of a workforce to be doing so otherwise. But it's just something to flag, so.
Council Douglas, I think we'll find, I think we'll find cost savings this year. There were some areas that, you know, we had some expenditures that were greater than. I think part of that also was hiring a new manager was partly also.
Your fault.
The expense as well, so. Not as a result of hiring the new manager, but the process of hiring the new manager.
We'll send you the bill.
Yeah, you may as well. But it's, yeah, as far as legal, and there's also other funds that are used on the TIF side as well that are assigned specifically, like work Alyssa will do regarding, Alyssa Tibbetts will do regarding the TIF goes to that as an expenditure, which isn't part of your general administration expense as well, so.
Yeah.
Maybe a little bit greater, but that's later in the TIF discussion side.
I think maybe something for next year that could be beneficial too is like seeing the line item can seem overwhelming. So let's try to like itemize it into sections. Obviously, we can only say so much because it is personnel issues. But even if it's like trainings or whatever it may be, if we could segment it out, I think that could be helpful too. I know, I just forgot about it, yeah. Does Denise? I had a busy year, yeah. Any other questions about 190?
Council Douglas, just one other point for the council to be aware as well. Attorney Tibbetts is gonna be leaving Jensen Baird and going on her own to do some, you know, she's, so there may be some changes that we'll see there. When I talked with Alyssa about it, I let her know that I was what you would call legal firm agnostic when it comes to it. And she's the best when it comes to a lot of different things. And so, you know, our plan is to continue, it's not like she's going to Kathmandu, she's still gonna, you know, be local. But our intent is to keep on using her for many different areas, as well as, you know, Ben McCall, who does a lot of work for us, and Paige Eggleston, who does a lot of work for us. But there may be some changes afoot, so.
Matt, I think that's great you want to stick with her.
Oh gosh, yeah.
I work with her on 12, at least 12 different municipalities, and nobody does it better.
Yeah, she's a weapon, to be frank. She's just so darn good at what she does. And her strategic thoughts and experience, quite honestly, I think she likes to work in specific areas. And that's what, she's at that point in her life, so it's, she let me know a couple of weeks ago and is letting her clients know. So I just wanted the council to be advised of that. So we don't anticipate a change than what you've seen here on budgetarily. We just may, you may see billing go to different entities in the future when looking at warrants.
It's amazing. Great, if we want to move on to.
I view that as a terrible, terrible thing.
210? Police?
Not that she's leaving, but we're losing that depth of that firm.
Alrighty, 210.
So police department's 210. One of the adjustments we had to do for the full-time wages and benefits was that, if you remember earlier, town manager explained that we originally budgeted in 2025 with a 5% budget for wage increase. And so, our 26 budget is a combination of catching up 25's contracted bargaining agreement, and then bringing in what we anticipate for next year's increase of 4%. So that's why you see an overall percentage increase of about 7.8%. Also to point out, we have a shared employee. We have a portion of, we have one and a half SROs not quite being fully reimbursed by the MSAD, but you'll see right above that red line, that 1499, it said Shared EE. That is the reimbursement portion of what we get back from the SAD for those SROs. Town manager does plan on reviewing. I think we kind of, kind of got a little off-track on what we're actually receiving in reimbursement for those one and a half employees. The increase of costs for employees has kind of increased a little bit faster than our reimbursement rate. So the town manager does plan on going to the school district next year and kind of looking for an adjustment to that amount. So for, in the meantime, right now, we're just trying to look at increasing the adjustment for the difference from last year's increase that we missed from the budget, and then the 4% increase that the employees are getting for this year. Some other changes that happened on this budget. We had the police department add their own travel and training line. What happened, used to happen in the past is in Budget 130, we usually have a line for department head training. But it seems that as we're coming out of COVID, before that amount seemed to be enough for, you know, all of our department heads. But we're, you know, we're trying to invest more into our employees, and our chief and our captain are both parts of national associations. So we asked them to start budgeting their costs for that in their own budget, so that it didn't interfere from allowing anybody else to use the department head budget that we had under administration and finance. So that, that's another increase you'll see in there, that's why you see one line that looks like 3,000% increase there. And then the other adjustments that we made, uniforms used to be a stipend that was given to the employees, to our police force. But now that's more on, we'll be making the purchases based on the, again, the CBA agreement. So the line kind of moved from above the red line to below the red line to a line called uniforms and clothing. The, there was an increase in the trained person under community police. So that is a shared position with the fire department. And then the other larger increase that we see for the police department is under contracted services. This is due to a 6% increase for our dispatch service. That's a shared cost between the fire department and the police department. We also had the Axion contract, that went up. The contract was, we had a renewal, a five-year renewal on that contract. And this contract includes some additional functionality that the police department needed, including being able to redact information off of a video that they did not have previously, previous functionality on. And this includes, again, a five-year renewal of that contract. And then the other costs are associated with just in general costs increases, such as ammo, tires, you know, radios and whatnot. These are just anticipated increase in costs year over year.
Quick question, holiday pay, is that part of the CBA?
So this holiday pay that we're including in this portion is the portion that, yes, where an employee actually works on a holiday.
Yep.
So their rate is substantially more. So that's why it's included as part of the budget.
Do we do the same for our public works? Because I don't see a line item there. Or is that part of their CBA, the police departments?
They do get a, they do get a wage adjustment for working on a holiday, we just don't break it out like we do for the police department.
Okay, great. Denise?
You go for it. I have two questions. One is the overtime budget is 105,000 and some change. Are those, is that like mandatory overtime that's unavoidable, like on a holiday? Or to where basically having either a full-timer or two part-timers to take that over, you know, at a lower rate?
So as you know, right now, there's vacancy in our police department. So covering those shifts creates overtime, as well as if you have an employee out on whether it's FMLA or sick, it's the person who ends up taking over that shift that's gonna end up putting them in an overtime status.
Do we know, once that position, that vacant position's filled, how much that should be expected to change?
No, because, you know, you're still gonna have employees that will be out sick, or taking the holiday off, or vacation, yes.
At the current time, we've had two employees that had, you know, a couple of different medicals. So they're out during their recovery time. You know, one might be in on light duty, and so that kind of helps offset that. But I know, like Joe Burke, detective, has picked up a lot of regular patrol shifts, and he's a detective, but he's gone out and picked up that to help offset the shortage. But once we do fill that one vacant position, that'll be helpful. But it is, I will say it's an efficient operation, the way to look at it. And sometimes you get caught, in some years more so than others, so, but you want to almost budget for the worst-case scenario, and then if you get to the end of the year and you're underspent, then it could go back towards the general fund, or you could do a carry-forward to help offset.
I have one more question on the K-9 unit, I guess. The, curious just in general of what, I don't, I don't want to phrase it in a way that makes it sound like I don't value having K-9. Like, obviously, there's, there's good things about it. My question is what, though, what is the value we're getting out of it? Is it as a deterrent, like community engagement, missing persons, drugs? Like, what is, what are we getting back for having a K-9 on the force?
All the above.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, pretty much. Officer Otto is a, is a good addition to the team. And, yeah, he's a pretty amazing, pretty amazing guy. But, yeah, there's a lot of good efforts that could take place there.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Go ahead, Dicky.
Okay, sorry, I'm a nervous Nellie, Helene, but it looks like we're budgeting less this year for gasoline, and maybe the tariffs aren't really something we need to be concerned on, but are they something that we need to be concerned on? It looks like it's based on a four-year average.
I think the police department took a look at where they are, because if you look at their year-to-date actuals right now, they're about 14,000.
Yep.
So, and we're more than halfway through the year. So I think they were just trying to make sure that they weren't over-budgeting their need for gasoline.
But we're not concerned about the price going up?
I think we should be looking at their, looking at their actuals, because they were at 20, you know, three years ago was a high year. We were at 27,4, but then it dropped down about the 21, 22K range. So if they go up 25% above that, you're still at about 26, 27,000.
Because the usage is less?
Because the usage is less. So overall, I think, you know, partly you get more efficient vehicles, probably less idling, a little bit more efficiency there. But I think if you, if you go up 25% on that, because we do, 80% of our fuel comes from Irving, basically. And then, you know, as well as natural gas, Maritime's Northeast is the pipeline that comes through, comes through here, so that's our natural gas supplier. But overall, I think we're in decent shape when it comes to it, especially on that, on that side. I think we've got enough of a gap, you know, that we should be, I think we should be whole.
Should we get everyone a Costco membership? Because last week, it was like $2.20 at Costco. Okay.
Go ahead Denise.
This is so piddly and dumb to even mention, it's not even $200. But I'm looking at the Portland Press Herald, it looks like 12 maybe digital subscriptions? Is that what that is? Like, it's 12 units of PPH at 16? Like, is that just having news in the office? Is this something that we could get like a shared subscription on? Or what even is this?
Where are you looking again? I apologize.
Under office supplies on all other expenses. Coffee, printing, newspaper.
That's for 12 months, not 12.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, $16 a month times 12 months.
The unit is a month, not a person. Got it.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
A little bit of commentary. If I look at the '03, or '23 to '26, it's almost a half a million dollar increase.
Get with you here, Bob.
And so, you know, the questions that come to my mind is, what are we asking our departments to do differently, rather than just repeat the same thing year after year after year? And I engaged with a, one of the officers the other day, and I, you know, I said, so tell me, what's the difference between a qualified police officer in Yarmouth and Falmouth? Should we not have one uniform employment application for the three communities? Because it, you know, you can't, you look at the three communities, and they're, one qualified police officer in Yarmouth certainly would be qualified in Yarmouth. And so the answer is, well, we have a written test. So I think, you know, if I, if I look at, if I look at national standards, I look at international standards, I think there's one country that has a, a single police department. There's no state police, there's no county police, there's no local police. It's standardized police department. So, pardon me, says, go back and cut 10% out of your budget, and show me what you're going to do differently the next year. I've hopped on this for years, since I was on the school board. Consolidation of services, trying to do things differently, more efficiently, and, you know, I appreciate the effort that our police department does. I like local policing. You know, there's a lot of value to knowing the guy who's in the car. But I also know that there's, the efficiencies of scale are much different. If you, if you took, just took the three communities and you applied one chief to that, and you applied one set of training standards, and, you know, there are ways to save money. And it's incumbent upon us as the elected body to start saying, I want to see what you are going to do differently than you did last year, and I want to see some results. I want to see you benchmark to me what it is that you're going to do. Because, should I just say, all right, I'm gonna add 5% next year, I'm gonna add 5% next year, and the following year? I think we can get better outcomes. I think there are ways to, you know, and I look at the turnover in our police force. You know, young people want to move ahead. They want to, they want to, they want to do, you know, they want a, they want a career, if you will. And part of that career is, you have a starting point, and you finish up, I'm gonna be chief of police someplace. So I think that if you, if you have a way for a greater place of advancement, better opportunities, you know, I think the town gains by it, and I think our department becomes more, more efficient. So I'm using the police department right now, and certainly I'm gonna say the same thing with the fire department. But I think we have to say, chief, what can you tell me that you can do for, in the next three years? Give me some benchmarks, give me some outcomes. I want to see something different.
Can you?
So my only, my only point of contention in their budget, I'm tired of funding Rees Across America. Strike it.
Okay. Can you articulate, I don't think your sentiment's off. I know we've had a lot of sidebar conversations about regionalization, and you mentioned earlier having some sort of shared engineer service. I think your sentiments are on point, but I think where we're getting lost is the conversation comes around during budget season, and I think there's been steps in between. But what can we do to, like, make and/or articulate what a next step forward would be? Because I think, I think we just get lost in what the process is. So like, what, what do you see as an actionable, successful next year? Are you looking for the fire department and the police department to come to us with a strategic plan for the next one to three years? Like, what is, like, I feel like we have to, when you say that, we have to put forth some sort of actionable item that is putting them to task versus just alluding to what we expect, you know?
I'd go one step further. I would tell this guy right here, you've heard it, come back with a plan. You know, because I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to grind down into the police department, I don't want to grind down into the fire department. I want to set a high-level, this is what I want. Come back and, come back with some suggestions.
In six months, or what's?
In six months, and come back with a working, a, come back with something. I mean, I think we can discuss that, but I think we need to have that discussion.
Okay.
And unfortunately, it's the budget season, so I'm using the bully pulpit, if you will.
Yeah. I'm just trying to help, like, pull out what we can do to move it forward, because I'm an actions person, right? So like, what are the things we can do to say, hey, Matt, in six months, we want a strategic plan on what regionalization of the police department, fire department, in the next one to three years looks like? I think we just have to be a little more direct with what we are looking for versus making it such a loosely defined discussion.
I think this is a great conversation.
So, go ahead Denise.
On that too, as far as making a goal that is measurable and actionable, like, the, I don't know how many it was, the list of like 11 ways you can consolidate, lots of little ways, and there are some much more radical than others, some not so much, like consolidating billing among towns. So if it's, if you're looking for an item, be like, hey, pick something on the list, talk, you know, with, you know, the other chiefs in towns and figure it out, and make one of those things happen in the next X amount of years.
Yes.
So if that's how you're gonna do it, that would be a little specific.
I was gonna ask a question of Mr. Eads if he would take it.
Michael, are you accepting questions?
Like, is there, like, just, because we've had these conversations about fire, obviously, and we are doing steps with fire in terms of meeting with other managers, and the chiefs are meeting, and, you know, we were taking those steps there. But what's it, like, what's the appetite like on the police side? I don't know anything about it. Like, are, is it the, is there appetite from other communities to be consolidating, to be sharing, or is it more? Because if we want, we can't just say we want to regionalize if we don't have a partner, right? If Falmouth isn't interested, or Yarmouth isn't interested, or in North Yarmouth, I think it's on the sheriff model, right? Like, so we also have to have, you always have to have a dance partner to move the conversation forward, right? And so I was just curious, at the holistic level, if you have an opinion.
I can tell you, just going around all four corners of the state, there's no appetite down here to consolidate, zero. You could probably cut out your top two people here, if you wanted to consolidate and have one chief within, if you did a tri-town thing. But if you get to that level, why wouldn't you consider the sheriff's department? You know, I, I don't disagree with much what Bob says, I really don't. But what is it, what is it worth having the officer that shows up at your house, that knows you, knows your location? What is, what is that worth? Is it worth a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to have that community historical knowledge? I think it is. I like the fact that, I mean, we're only down one person right now, which is, which is not bad compared to other places around. And it says a lot about Chip, says a lot about the town.
We're competitive in wages. Yeah, but I mean, we go someplace, I'm looking at Augusta, who has a great police department. And they're down nine or 10 officers. They're hemorrhaging because their wages aren't competitive. We weren't competitive, what, around about eight years ago? And we had a change in probably 10 now in leadership. We had a change in what we were paying. We did a big bump. We changed some stuff in the retirement. And guess what? When, you know, now we have veteran cops coming to us. I mean, I, I was looking down the list and I, the people that have come here, that are officers someplace else, I, I represented in, in their previous police department. And they, we, we don't end up with trash here. We end up with, with good officers. So what's that worth? And not worry about the headaches of, we don't get sued here. What's that worth to the town? We don't, we have a great partnership with our schools, our community. What's that worth? And so I think for the bang for the buck, we make it work here. And like I said, if, if, if it was strictly cost saving, I would tell you, just go to the sheriff's department. They're dispatching for us. They've got a whole bunch of special services that we would get by going with them if it was strictly budget. But you're not going to, Yarmouth doesn't want to lose their local control. North Yarmouth doesn't want to participate. You know, I, I've always, my complaints have always been with North Yarmouth and Gray. They're growing towns and they barely contribute to law enforcement. Fire department, all day long. But they, you know, we, we in Cumberland are paying for some of Gray's law enforcement. And it's wrong. So I, I don't know if that answers your take or not.
I just, you're, you're in that world and I was curious. And we're also coming off of the public safety banquet that we had on Saturday, which was an incre- sorry. That's not to do with the budget, but it was, I mean, one of the things that really sits with me on the police specifically is, was I think Joe Burke, who's a.
Detective.
Detective Joe Burke, who intervened when someone was recently about to put themselves in front of the train tracks. And part of that was that he had that historical knowledge about that individual that had a mental health issues. And, and I know that's a very like incredible thing for someone in our community or someone that works in the police department that we know to have intervened and saved a community person's life. I was, but, but also you have, we, we still have to also think about efficiency, right? And so you're in that world. I was just, it does help and thank you.
Yeah.
If I could just respond, I, I agree with you Mike. But I, I think that there's, I think if there, I think there's a number of areas. One is in the hiring process. Two is in the training process, you know? Third is the hierarchy. You know, I, I think you let these guys age out, but you don't replace them. You know, you say, okay, I'm going to have a single chief. You know, particularly in the fire department where so much of the response is, is mutual aid. It's, you know, training, hiring, all those office, back office work, all that stuff. It doesn't need to be done at a local level. We don't, we don't need an office, we don't need an office manager for every fire department, every police department. Because we're, we're all doing the same thing. So I, I think everybody wants to protect their turf. And nothing's worse, nothing's better than an organization that wants to be a larger organization. I mean, we all are empire builders at some level. So, but I think if we don't, if we don't try, then we, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
And Bob, I just don't want you to walk away thinking for a second that I don't agree with much what you said. I just, I can just tell you, traveling all around the state, and we, we represent 56 departments plus the state police. And we have no problems here with our police department compared to other places. And I've been.
I know.
I was, I was in Fort Kent for two days negotiating this, this week on a contract. And they had six people and they were down to one five or six years ago. Down to one in the whole town. And now they're back up because they've got great management and they're paying competitive. And everybody up there obviously is local. And then you, I've watched departments like Auburn just disintegrate. And now they're back up for whatever reason. But we just don't seem to have the problems. And we don't have the internal problems here. And it's something we.
I don't want to break, I don't want to break the system, but I do want to explore efficiencies.
Yeah, then I think, I think we look at it like that. What are, you know, tasking Matt with like, you know, here are high level. And then maybe that's a council discussion with the goal setting we have, well, that's separate of this. But it just having an aside of what are the objectives for the year with Matt? As far as expectations for efficiency go? Because I think we need, we need to make a clear expectation instead of having him interpret what our expectation is. Because I think we're not going to get the result we're looking for. And I think sometimes we are very loosely defined with what that could be. And I think we need to be a bit of a, bit more direct in that delivery, so. Ronald.
Just a comment. I interact with Cumberland, Falmouth, Yarmouth, the state police, the county. Probably is more than, maybe Mike interacts with them more than I do. But I mean, every night I'm dealing with these guys. We have some quality people here in Cumberland. And I'm not just saying that. Two of the last hires that the town of Cumberland made were exceptional guys. And I mean exceptional, they came from other departments. You couldn't hire a better guy, either one of them. And I won't mention the names, but they do phenomenal work. They're great with people. They're just good people. I don't see that in other towns. I shouldn't say this, but the sheriff's department, they hate each other. I mean, Mike, you probably know this. I mean, they don't get along. They, they just, they hate their jobs. You don't see that in Cumberland. They love their job, they like what they do, and they're good people. One thing in the budget thing that I'd just like to see removed, coffee supplies, Fred's coffee. It's not in any other budget. Just put supplies.
We can work on that.
Okay. We do have exceptional guys and I'm not just saying that. I mean, but.
We'll make sure we're, we're, we're brand, uh, brand neutral.
Phil Stiles has had his hand up in the back of the room for a while, so.
Bill Stiles.
I just wanted to let you know that a few years back when the state was in the financial crisis.
Yep.
The towns of, of Cumberland, Falmouth, Yarmouth and Freeport got together to put a consolidated plans together with everything. One of which was the police department. They were able to come up with a plan and save substantial money.
Do you know what year that might have been?
I'm lucky if I know this.
Get, get me a year. Get me a year.
It's at least 10 years back.
Okay.
The manager might know it's when the woman there, and I would get her name wrong every time, was raising havoc with the budget around.
Oh, yes.
Carol, Carol Plesky, Mr. Stiles, yep.
Yeah, I remember that. What was that called? It was a cap.
He came up with a substantial job putting all the departments together under one chief and several captains.
Okay.
Not that I see it happening today, but it's possible.
Okay, thank you. Just an aside, Bob, I know you made a comment about something of the reefs being slashed.
Reef across America. It's under community policing.
Is that someone, every, is something everyone is in agreeance for? Do we have more information on that? Would it be easier for us to say, find $1,500 savings?
I don't like to micromanage budgets, you know, so.
Well, you said it, so.
I know, I did.
So you take it back?
I don't take it back, but I.
You take.
I just sent it and I'm not asking.
Here we go, with being clear.
I'm not asking you to act on it.
Let's be direct. So we're taking it back. All right. Helene and Matt, one further question before we move forward. I think we'll call it on this cost center once we're done. But when we're looking at these budgets going forward, is it helpful for us to flag specific items to say we want removed? Or say, can we get this to a certain number? Like for example, if we were looking at police and we said, can we get this 125 to 120? Is that an easier conversation to have? Or do you have any feedback there?
Thank you, Chair Douglas. I think it'd probably be easier to find it if you said we want to change that number versus saying we want to see this out. Just give some flexibility for, you know, as well as for us to work with the department heads to say, okay, where do you think that you want to find that efficiency? And we could, you know, if given a target, we will do our darndest to, to bullseye it.
Okay, great. That's some food for thought for next, oh, go ahead.
Quick question, just because it's in both fire and police and I want to know what it means. The special details revenues and the details tied to revenue, they kind of like cancel each other out. But there aren't any of those for this year and next year? What?
So we try not to let that impact the overall budget? Because what that is, is when we have outside agencies basically renting a cop or renting a fire department for a venue or an event. So it's supposed to be, their costs should be covered by the revenue that they bring in. So we don't want that to affect what we're pulling for millage purposes.
Okay.
Good deal, thank you.
Awesome. So we will stop there. As a reminder for everyone out there tonight, our next meeting will be on Monday, March 17th at 5:00 PM. And this recording will be available online, I think either later today or sometime tomorrow for those at home. And we'll take a quick bio break. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You did such a great job.
Alrighty, happy Monday, everyone. Today is Monday, March 10th, 2025. I will call this town council meeting to order at 5:00 PM. We had a budget workshop, the first of many. It's very exciting. First up on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the February 24th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
One abstention.
One abstention. Thank you Brenda. All right, next up, we have our managers' report. Okay, before we do our managers' report, we also have a very, very special guest here this night. This, tonight, rather. Christina Mitchell is here to tell us what is going on in the legislature. Christina, welcome, come on up. Nice to see you.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
Absolutely spiffing.
So happy to see you.
Yes, good to see you guys too. I'm glad you're back there behind that, so.
Yeah.
So I don't know what exactly you want me to tell you about what's going on. So I certainly welcome questions. I'm sure people aren't aware of anything that's going on up there. It's been very quiet, as you've noticed. So I can fill you in on this and that and then ask me what else you'd like to know. And if I know, I'll let you know. So the supplemental budget has been one big topic you may have heard about. It has not passed yet. It's currently, to fast forward, it's currently in the senate. They're doing what they do. The emergency portion of the bill was removed. So it cannot, it does not need to be passed immediately. I mean, it needs to be, but it's, it's not going to be. However, it is very important to get it passed. There, it was whittled down in the appropriations committee to two major topics. And one topic is, I've learned how to do this without breaking them. One topic is main care. And it is vital that that be passed. The reason main care, and in case you get these questions too, I imagine you do. The reason main care needs more money this year to finish out the year. The supplemental has to be passed by June 30th or the state shuts down. The supplemental budget, main care portion of it, is because it's, it's a bit of a victim of its own success. So many more people signed up for it. They have the need and qualify for main care. So there's a lot more people who need services and payment. Secondly, costs have risen. As we know, everything's more expensive, hospitals, bills, et cetera, doctors. So it's simply more expensive and needs to be passed so people can get what they need. And the other, looking at my paper for the actual numbers, there are over 400,000. there are over 400,000 Mainers who rely on main care. And everyone, I'm preaching to the choir, you probably already understand this, but main care is Maine's version of Medicaid. So it's needed. And the numbers are shocking, but that many need it. It's half of all Maine children, half of every child in this state has main care coverage. And one in three people are covered by main care. Mainers, people are covered by main care. And there is a higher percentage of more rural Mainers that rely on it. There was a breakdown at, I don't have the chart with me, but there was a breakdown of counties. And it's stunning. There are some counties that over 60% of the people need main care. So there's a lot of need out there, more than we perhaps see around here. We see need here, too. But there's huge need. So that has to be passed. Pretty critical. I can answer more about that. The second thing that is in the supplemental budget that needs to be passed really soon, there's this invasive worm. It's called the spruce budworm. I knew nothing about it before. But we might all recollect that last year, the fires in Canada that were so bad and then we got a lot of the smoke. Some of that, it was drought, but another part of the cause of that was this worm that just loves our trees. The spruce, obviously trees, some of the pine evergreen, but not every one of them, some are more resistant. But once it eats through just thousands and millions of acres, the trees are dead. And it's just one lightning spark and you've got those fires. So they need to spray in northern Maine. We're not as imminently in danger in the southern part of the state, but if it isn't taken care of, it will come. And it's massive as far as the economy. There are so many people, jobs, of course, that rely on that. So it's pretty critical that that get addressed soon. The forestry division say they really need to spray ideally in March, certainly early April. So this is pretty imminent. The holdup for the budget is that it has to be passed by two-thirds. And that did not occur. There were other intervening events that created a lot of friction. And there were not any minority votes, not one. It was originally, I don't have the date right in front of me, February 5th, I do. It was originally passed through the appropriations budget committee. And it was passed bipartisan, which was sweet, actually. It was unanimous. It was pretty stunning. There was one individual on the committee who was absent and the next day was upset. He did not, was not able to submit his vote. There had been previous policy agreements, I guess they do that every time they start a new legislature, agree on when you, if you're not there, when you can vote. And sometimes you can, depending on what's being discussed or decided. Sometimes you have, you know, 24 hours, sometimes it's 48 hours to submit your vote, yada, yada, yada. That had already been decided a month prior. However, there was a lot of consternation about this individual's vote. And so it effectively shut down the, the will to vote for many individuals. So it effectively didn't pass on February 11th and February 25th, it was attempted again. Other intervening events occurred and there was more ill will and it did not pass. So the Senate's got it. It's been stripped of the emergency title on it and still needs to be passed. I mean, the main care people need their money. They need to be paid. It's really dangerous because a lot of nursing homes, for example, they depend on it and they need their bills paid now. So that's where that is. Probably didn't hear a thing about that, I'm sure. Let's see, what else? I anticipate, I could be wrong, there are a lot of property tax questions tonight, property tax relief. So let me clarify a couple of things first. One is that the governor's budget, as well as the majority budget, that the goal is 55% funding for the schools. So that in itself being in the budget, you've got supplemental budget and then you've got the biennial budget. So it's in the biennial budget, which we get to after we finish the supplemental budget, but they may be combining it. We'll see how that goes. Anyway, that's a crucial part of giving relief to municipalities as far as funding the schools, that we're firmly staying at the 55% funding. And the 5% municipal revenue sharing also will continue. At least that's, that's the plan. Doesn't mean everyone's voting for that, but we just need most people to vote for that. And then the homestead exemptions, they are still being provided. And what I pulled for you all, I can find it here, what I pulled for you all is the point where we're at is in mid-January, every representative would submit their bills. And then it goes through the process, I'm sorry if you already know all this, I learned a lot of it myself. Goes through the process, it gets through the reviser's office, it gets spit back out with all the legalese, and then it gets assigned to committees. So that's where most of the bills, almost any bill you can think of, that you know about, they're in committee now. So the good news is they've been assigned to committees, most of them. Apparently over 2,000 bills were submitted. And so it takes some time to get all those to be processed through. They're not all there yet. But over 200 are ready in front of the committees and they're working on them having hearings. So there are, I, I had a list, I ran a list of all the different proposed bills regarding property tax exemptions and how they could help municipalities and whatnot. They're not all the same, but there are a bunch bipartisan on both sides. Everybody is submitting a lot of bills. And if there's that many, surely some of them will get through. Some have already have had hearings, some have not. For example, I'll just name a few. There is a LD 806, it's to increase homestead exemption reimbursement. There's another one to reduce the 12-month resident status requirement that's part of the property, the Homestead Exemption Act right now. There's another one that is supposed to exempt for the Homestead Act, individuals who are legally blind, which, you know, that's some, each of these may be small, but collectively, they will make a difference, is the hope. And then there is, LD 218 is a property tax stabilization aimed to help older Maine residents. So one reason I mention these is you all are probably aware, a lot of the public is probably aware, there are ways to track these bills, if this is a topic you're really interested in, or a bill on any topic. And you can find the bill and if it's something that you have knowledge about or you, you're passionate about it, I encourage everybody to testify. It's something I really knew, didn't know about before. But if you, it's very simple to do. You don't even need to know the, the bill number. You could put in like tax on the legislative website, tax bills, and it'll just spit them all out. And you can go through it if it's your thing. But you can find out when the hearing is, it describes the bill, when the hearing is, when the work session is for it. When there's a hearing, you can testify, submit testimony. You can be in person, you can be on Zoom, you can just do written submission. And I've seen testimony that's been like three sentences, you know, please don't pass this bill because I blah, 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 blah. And I've seen others that are like, you know, 13 pages explaining things. But I just encourage people to, you know, there's, there's a lot of angst about what's going on and everything and what is our state doing? Well, you don't have to know about everything, but get involved in whichever bill or topic passion you want. And it's not hard to do. I mean, I had to learn too, but it's not hard. Secondly, there's a bulletin that goes out from the Maine Municipal Association, which I'm sure you're probably quite aware of. But it goes out, I don't know if it's every, is it every month or every few weeks?
Every Friday.
Every Friday, okay. And it summarizes like, you know, what bills were up, what the general leaning was in the committee, where, when are they going to, to work session, yada, yada, yada. But you really can get a lot in, into the weeds. And it covers all the different committees and what's being discussed and whatever. So those are the main things I wanted to bring up for you. There are obviously many other topics or whatever. I am on the education committee, so I know a lot about what bills we've seen and what the trend is. I, I will venture that we've gotten 25, 20, 25 through our committee. But there are hundreds to go. It's one of the busier committees, who knew? But it's Education and Cultural Affairs, so there's a lot of different information coming at us. But judiciary and Health and Human Services are also very, very busy committees. So that's the basic. Happy to fill you in or find out if I can't, if I don't know.
Two things. Where do we get that bulletin from?
Well, if you look up Maine Municipal Association online.
Okay.
I'm sure there's a link to it. I also am sure that Mr. Sturgis has copies in his office.
I think our old town manager used to forward it to us every Friday.
I mean, honestly, Matt.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised because generally you get one as members of MMA. They, they usually just, they paper your inbox with them every Friday. And so I'll just, I'll double check on that to make sure you get added to the list and that way it won't distribute it, it won't just get everybody's.
Yeah, I liked, I liked getting them. They came in the mail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you getting them, Matt?
And then, okay, so it's not like a spam filter.
And then one other topic that I'm not certain if there's been any conversation surrounding it, but had it come up at our chairs in a circle, dialogue with GP Cog probably about a month ago, was, has there been any conversation surrounding tourist tax at all?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Tell me more.
I was in a meeting last night, one of the bills, which I don't know how many lodges by, as it's defined, we have in Cumberland, you guys know better than me. But there is a bill that has been proposed and it's in committee, don't tell me. It's in committee, it's been assigned to committee and it's coming up to, it is LD 225. And actually, there are two or three bills, but this is the specific one I know about and they're very similar. This one is to reduce property taxes and finance public school construction and education through a 3% sales tax on lodging. So specifically, the way the sponsor described it is it would, it bills the hotel or whatever to them, for whoever is there. And then most of that money, 90%, was he telling me the other night? 90% would go to, that was a separate bill, never mind. But the money would go to the municipality and the idea was then they decide how to, you know, distribute it. The second one that I'm thinking of, I'll just explain it in the pieces I recall because I didn't write it down. Same thing to tax lodging. But 90% of the money was going to go to the town itself to decide how to distribute it. Municipality. And the other 10% would be dedicated to affordable housing fund in that given town. So, you know, who knows if these bills will die in committee or they'll get farther. But again, seriously, add your voices. I get a lot of emails about a lot of topics and stuff and that's one of my main things, is this is what I know. This is the, the bills that are about it and add your voice. Because it does, you know, when I, when you go through these hearings, it makes a difference who all supports what. Because we don't, we don't know, I don't know things about lodging, it's what everyone is telling me. And then we all figure out together like, well, that one said that, that one said that, so maybe this is the way to go. So add your voices.
I got five things, but I'll try to not bring all five to the floor. I wish you'd came down back in November because now it's, we're, we're too late into the game here. And next session, next year is just emergency bills that can be presented. But I like to talk about a couple of things and we all know what parity is. We talk about parity between pay grades. We talk about parity between men and women. We talk about, you know, you know, occupational things and like that. I would like to have parity that Falmouth and Yarmouth and Portland have. And that is regards to the school budget. The school budget in a municipality is passed by the school board and it is presented to the municipality, which has first, first up and down, if you will, with it. We don't have that.
No.
Nope. So I would like you to take a look at that and introduce a bill to give municipalities that have an SAD or an RSU parity or take it away from the towns that have it.
I can wait. I don't know if I can do that one, okay.
I'm serious when I say that. Having served 15 years on the school board, I know that the, the, the focus is not on whether the municipality, the citizens of the municipality can afford the school budget, but the education of the students, which is, which is fine. That's where it should be. But having said that, I want to have parity, if you will. And I use that word because I think we can all identify with it. We all want to get paid the same rate for the same, for the same job. I want to have what Falmouth has, Portland, Yarmouth, Cape Elizabeth, Gorham, all those other communities.
So you want parity and the ability to oversee the school budget to discuss it with the school?
Exactly, yeah. So that's, that's item number one. The next one is essential programs and services. Essential programs and services, they, you know, the governor says, we're going to give you 55%. Essential programs and services no longer is essential programs and services. It needs to be reviewed. It's 25 years down the road and, and the bar has moved. So I, I would ask that you introduce a bill to reexamine what is essential programs and services. And, you know, in the last 25 years, a lot has changed. So I don't think it meets the needs of the communities. And frankly, I want more than that. I want more money.
Can I just add on to that with a lever in place for review? I think it's important that we review it, but then in five years, it should be up for review again. I think implementing those things for a longer term plan is also helpful. Sorry, go ahead.
So can I ask, review for what programs are included or which ones have been deleted?
Governor, excuse me, Governor Baldacci, when he committed himself to paying 55%, he wanted to know what, what am I paying for? And so out of that came essential programs and services. And it was a benchmark at the time, which, you know, this is, this is what we will fund for public education. You want more than that than it comes out of the, the taxpayer at the local level.
Yeah.
So what I'm suggesting is that it's no longer up to date.
Okay.
It needs, it needs a review.
Got it.
Couple of things about housing. The state says we need more housing.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree, you know, and, and we're working to do that on our own level. You know, we're, and, and so the, housing is, is multi-sided. It's, it's senior housing, it's, it's congregant care housing, it's, it's end of life care. It's also workforce housing. The state, if it's going to encourage, you know, you know, changing in zoning, you know, reduction in density, there needs to be some dollars attached to that because, all right, you want more housing. A lot of us, you know, and a lot of the public says, what about the schools? And so we're getting ready to build a new school with, with zero, zero money from the state. I want to see some increased funding from the state, you know, because we, we, we're not funding our schools adequately. We're not funding our, our building, construction adequately. We're throwing it on the backs of the property owner. And frankly, you know, it, it's, it's a burden on the community. You fund 150, 50 billion, 100 million dollar projects, all on a local tax dollar.
Yeah.
And then I guess my, my last, my last concern is we, we talk about bipartisanship and we, we've, we say, you know, the Republicans have got to work for us, the Democrats, Democrats aren't working with the Republicans. I'd like to see the legislature show to the public what bipartisanship is, you know.
Working on it. You've got to come visit.
I reached out to so and so and I took him out for breakfast. I bought him dinner. I took him to coffee. It, it, you know, we work together and build relationships. We, and we. We, and we, we all have different ideas about how governance should be and what things should be. But I think bipartisanship really works at a local level. It doesn't work at the state level, and I'm not sure of whether it's because we're just too stubborn. We're entrenched with, you know, being a member of a party. But I think that it's incumbent upon you to lead by example.
Yeah.
And I don't mean you, you, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, got it.
Here, here.
All right, I'll shut up.
So on that topic.
Shit stir. I love it.
I love it.
So on that topic, seriously, I, I, I agree. We've got to work together. We, we get that. I'd say a couple of things. One is you, you as, as in the public. You see the, the news clips, you know, they're going to show the exciting parts when there's clear division between the two groups. It's not always like that. I, I think people should come see. You will find sharing of cookies. I made one friend across the aisle over gluten-free cookies. It sounds silly and stupid. No, it's progress. Because she's got some really different views on things than me. But when I approached her about one of my bills, you know, the eyebrows went up like, huh, because that could help. So, so one of my bills, which is still in the reviser's office because we refined it a bit. But it has to do with senior care facilities, housing, like you mentioned. And it has to do with really small facilities. This one's based off of Shebig Island. They have island commons and it has ten beds. So when the Department of Health and Human Services put through some regulations that went to effect January first, it really shocked a lot of the nursing home facilities and care facilities. Because in smaller rural or island communities, they could not meet those standards because they have only ten beds. They cannot get the staffing ratio that the department required. So they were, they were going to go out of business. And also, you know, the main care payments is another issue. And just getting staffing in rural areas, getting workers. So this bill that, again, is in the reviser's office and will be spit back out again soon, I think, it's, it addresses that and it's not just, you know, it won't affect Cumberland much. But Shebig Island, that's going to make a world difference if it can help that, that senior care facility survive. And that cookie woman I mentioned, they've got one in their, her district that is also struggling. And it's very small. And they're rural. They cannot get any workers to come up there and, and, and that will help. Now, I will say the Department of Health and Human Services did change that particular detail, the ratio required. So they've made an exception for smaller facilities. Maybe they heard all the rumbling going on. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, my hope is, I have outreach to some other senators and Republicans, senators and representatives who are Republican across the aisle on, on bills. And I see this happening a lot. And yes, you'll see in the media like, oh, my God, they're so far apart. They're not like getting along at all. I would encourage people to like, look at who the sponsors and the cosponsors are for bills. You'll see a melange of who is like sponsoring and you'll find out like, huh, half of it's, you know, one party and the other part is the other party. So it, it is happening. I would also say there's a, they have an annual bus trip, which I went on to, this year went up toward the county. And it was a mix, it was about sixty or seventy legislators, and it was mixed of who it was. And they had us all sitting together very purposely, kind of like assigned seats in the bus in a way, just to make sure we were mixing. And, you know, connections were made, not only to the areas we visited, but also just people got to know each other. You know, you just, it wasn't, I will say it's not every legislator that's comfortable, old or new, that wants to make these connections, but it really is happening. I mean, you will see divisiveness for sure and a lot of frustration with each other on some topics that are very important and are perceived very differently. And people get really different information sometimes. And it's really hard to overcome that sometimes. So the effort is being made, but it may be hard to see it. And it won't overcome every topic for sure.
Welcome to the Town Council Representative Mitchell.
There you are. Thank you.
No, you, you, you're part of a long line of state representatives that have really served this town well, independent Republicans and Democrats.
Yeah.
And we're glad you're up, you're at the State House. Thank you. I, I would ask you to, I know there's a number of bills on the paid family medical leave.
Yes.
This time. I, I travel all over the state, all four corners of it, pretty much every place in between.
Mm-hmm.
You can't, I don't find, with the exception of one community, any support in the, in the management, the town management, whether it's town councils, city councils, or the managers themselves. And I would just ask you, if nothing else, the collect, places that have collective bargaining agreements, the employers, the employees are not going to get a benefit. Just, just the harsh reality of it. Yep, they're required to pay. And my worry is it's one percent now, but it's, the renewal is up in three years. What's it going to be then? I've never seen anything in the state government go down. So I'd ask you just to take a second look at that when it comes up. Obviously not trying to put you in a position tonight.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
But anyways, thank you for coming in and.
Yeah, sure, of course, yeah. I, I actually brought flyers on that that they've recently put out. They're not colored and folded, but I've got them. I think part of it, at least my experience is, and not all of it. I know some people understand the whole thing better than others. But there are details about it that people just don't understand yet. If you're a smaller business, for example, I forget the number, I don't want to say it. If you're less than fifteen employees, it's, it's, you know, there are different categories who has to pay into it. And if you're a very small business, you don't. And another question I had heard often was, well, if I've already got insurance for my employees or they have it, why do I have to switch to this? You don't have to. So there is, there is some misunderstanding of what, how it's going to work. And I understand the issue. I mean, I hear it. I heard it from both islands as well, the municipal meetings. They're like, eh, we don't have to pay this. And it is a small amount now, but I hear you, what happens going forward? Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's Maddie, Senator Maddie Dotree, who is not our senator, but she's very close to our Senator Teresa Purce, being the President of the Senate and the Majority Leader. So in particular, I would encourage you, next time she comes around, ask her about that. She not only has Senator Dotree's ear, but she's also much more knowledgeable about it, the ins and outs. I mean, I'm, they, it came about before I came, so I'm still learning about it as well. But I know you can get much more information from Senator Purce than perhaps me. But I can find out answers if I'd like.
I've jumped into it with both feet the last year. And it's, like you said, it just, it doesn't have, if people don't know, it passed at about two or three o'clock in the morning by one vote. I believe it went unsigned by the governor. So it already started out with two strikes up to the plate. And whether I'm, I'm in Washington County or Franklin County or this week, last week, I was in Arista County, you don't find any support for it. Very, very limited, so.
Let, let me gently add that, again, information, what representatives in communities, how they're fully explaining things or not. I've talked on that, on that bus trip, I talked to some other reps about it from other areas. And they didn't have an understanding of it, the way it's written. So, you know, it's, it's a learning curve for everybody. So I'm not surprised individual communities don't necessarily understand it. Even here, there are people, I mean, me, don't understand all of it. So hopefully it'll be explained more and more and more and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all right. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you. Anytime. I did have one request of you, which might go to you, and I can check on you later. They have a constant contact method where I send out information, like, like the one went out today about the Maine Sea Grant being pulled and what's going on with that. It's a really quick way to get information, like what happened, really quickly. I don't know if you're willing or interested, and I don't know who approves it, who doesn't, or how it goes. But there could be possibly a link to that. Some other communities do that in the town email newsletter, whatever. Senator Purce, I think, has hers through Falmouth. But at any rate, it's one, one mode, it's one possibility of getting information more directly. Otherwise, it's just me sending emails to those people that I have in the community, like, hey, this is what's going on. Or through my Facebook page, which I don't like to rely on that too much. So just a thought and I'll get back to you on.
Thank you. I'd be happy to keep that conversation going.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe it's like, no, but whatever. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll leave some flyers on the family paid medical leave with Mr. Sturgis and my copy of the legislative bulletin from MSMA. Be sure you get it from him. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
Anytime.
All right, Mr. Manager, after, are you ready to give your manager's report? Would you like a moment?
Ready to roll.
All right, let us hear it.
Good to go. Thank, thank you very much. I'm happy to be able to provide an update on the various operational matters within the town this evening, including tax deadlines, project approvals, upcoming meetings and infrastructure developments. And hopefully keep the council informed and engaged with current activities and challenges. So as we navigate the various options of our town, it's essential to maintain clear communication. So hopefully we can do that as a part of it. And you've noticed probably that we're also distributing a lot of this through the crier now as well to try to, for those who don't have the opportunity to see it live, they can check it on Memorex. So tax deadline, March seventeenth is the due date of the second half of the taxes. Town staff, but I want to, I want to preface that by saying, town staff is, as I said earlier this evening during the workshop, is very aware of recent mail delivery challenges. And especially in different sections of Cumberland, which have seen, you know, certain sections have been more acutely impacted than others. Obviously, take these challenges into account in our operations next week. I'm not calling it a tax holiday, but I'm just saying that not everybody can get here on time. But we have noticed a vast increase on foot traffic with people dropping off their bills because they're not sure if they put it in the box that it's going to get here on time. So I just want people to know that we're, we're aware of that and we're happy to work, work with people.
Matt, just on, on that, do, if it doesn't get, show up to you on time, you still go by the postmark though, right? So as long as it gets postmarked.
We still go by the postmark, yeah. As long as it gets postmarked, on or before the seventeenth.
Okay.
But, but.
If it doesn't get picked up, it doesn't get postmarked.
But I'm saying we.
Right, yeah, if you put it in your box.
Yeah. It's not magical.
It's not a guarantee. You can put your flag up and it'll sit there for a week, like it happened to me.
You're just happy to get it the next week or so.
But if you get into a mail, a US mailbox, you know, or into the post office, as long as it's postmarked, you're good.
In a very conservative reading of the law, yes. But I'm saying that we know there are challenges, so we'll take that into account and use our best judgment, if that makes any sense.
You don't put a lien on your property for a couple of weeks.
There is some reading between the lines that I'm starting to insinuate here.
Grace period.
I'm going to just come out and say, hey, it's a.
There's a grace period.
All the, all the income free, just, just saying that we, we do know there are some challenges that we're.
I know from experience.
Staff is trying to use our best judgment.
Let the man do his job.
Lead by example.
On, on that note, planning board update, there will be no planning board meeting this month. However, the MSAD fifty-one project was approved, as, as you may know, last month's, at last month's meeting, along with specific conditions. So that'll be moving forward as we'll see soon. The Comprehensive Planning Committee will be meeting this week on the thirteenth. And they'll have on their agenda a recommendation for a consultant to help on the comprehensive plan project. So, and then you should see that on your twenty-fourth agenda for action to award the contract for that. So the recommendation that they do have coming their way is with a, with a contractor that came in twenty-five thousand dollars under what we had budgeted. So hopefully that will be well received. Parks and Recreation, the spring brochure for Parks and Recreation is now available electronically and has been mailed out. And again, with the delays, we're hoping that folks receive them fairly soon. But, but that's, that's very exciting for them. I know they're proud as heck about it as well. A total of a hundred and fifty-one programs and events are planned for the spring season. Registration for Day Camp, for those who are looking at a very competitive opportunity, it opens on, online on March twenty-fifth. And then, however, the registration for all the other programs is starting on April first. What they found in the past, talking with Pete Bingham, was a lot of volume coming in for Day Camp on the same day that the others were opening up and the phones would get jammed and people would have a hard time trying to get through to sign up for all those. So that's why they're staggering those a week apart. Hopefully that'll make it easier. On, on Friday, the west end of town had a water shutdown. The Portland Water District had a breaker that went on their pump station and it's shut down the west side for a little while. And the circuit was replaced, resolving the issue that was causing the shutdown. But that's, that's something that we want to maintain and we'll be monitoring going forward. It's, it's a bit of a challenge. However, regarding the water main crossing from Blackstrap Road at the main turnpike, both the sixteen-inch water main and the twenty-four-inch casing are now in place. So that's pretty great to see that moving forward. They ran into a little trouble at, at the start and have since reconciled that. Gorham Sand and Gravel installed a sixteen-inch gate valve and temporary cap on March seventh. And they plan to connect the sixteen-inch water main to the existing twelve-inch main, which is the big, you know, one of the big reveals taking place towards, towards the middle of this week. And there will be a temporary water shut-off for a little bit of time. But notices have been sent to the affected folks, so just to be aware that it might.
Thursday night.
Yeah, Thursday night is when, is when that's going to go down for a little bit. So hopefully it's not going to be too long.
The Chief Small was in the garage today and he said it's only going to affect people on Blackstrap, which is one resident, the fire station and the community hall.
Yep, yep, exactly.
There'd be nobody else affected by it, so.
And hopefully it won't be that.
Yeah, right.
Be, be that lie. The MDOT is, if you came through town center today, they're doing test borings right at Blanchard Road and Main Street by Sweetser's Orchard, where it's, what they're doing that for is to assess the soil quality and composition ahead of the planned culvert replacement next summer. So it's all part of that, that, that project that was there. And that work, for at least the test borings, will occur during, after the school commute times and hopefully be done for the afternoon school commute time. So trying to lessen the impact. However, there may be the occasional delay for that middle part of the day, but they should be wrapped up tomorrow early afternoon. A question last month was brought up regarding the silent second mortgages and the Crossing Brook development, if you, if you recall. That was, that was a great learning curve for me. I had the opportunity to review every one of the files for all forty-nine properties to, to see the level of detail that was needed in the neighborhood. I will say this, the records are well maintained. They have, of, of, there are forty-nine properties total, nineteen of which have paid off those second, silent second mortgages. So they either had sold the house or, but it was, originally it was a twenty thousand dollar mortgage, which had an interest accrual that was going to be up to the, to a maximum of sixteen thousand dollars for a total, silent second mortgage total of thirty-six thousand dollars that could be paid and it would remove the restriction. So nineteen of them have removed them because they've fully paid and satisfied those. And those funds that were paid off were allocated to the, to the land acquisition fund. So those funds have, have moved over the years and they've been used for different process, different, different projects over the years. Three properties I did find had their discharges that were in there, but they hadn't been recorded. So we've made that correction. So in case any person was doing a, a title search, they'll find now that those, you know, as of probably. know, as of probably by the, as long as the mail service gets it there in time, this week at some point, they should be, they should be recorded and those, and those records will be closed, so. But they are, I will say they are, they have been in great shape. The details are all there, the files are very good, showing the qualifying of, of individuals who bought them, that they met the, met the income requirements and all that was really, it's been really well done. So it's served its purpose and it's, it's aged well. Reached out to the Maine DOT and I'm looking to get updates regarding three really large projects. Tuttle Road Bridge replacement, Millbrook Bridge replacement, which is down on Route 9, that overtops down, down by you, Councilor Veil. That's anticipated to happen this summer at some, like later, I think in August, and there may be some traffic rerouting that comes around off Wind Road and then back, and then back around like the end of Range Road that comes, comes back onto Route 9, as well as the roundabout project that I consistently try to beat the drum on that for. Still awaiting more updates when it comes to that, but I think at least Tuttle Road and Mill, the, Millbrook should happen this summer. Bill Longley was speaking with an appraiser who's doing all the right-of-way work down on Tuttle Road and she was of the indication that it was starting on July 4th, or right around the 4th of July. So what I'd like to do, and once I finally get them on the horn, is try to get them to come in, because I think it's important to have a representative come down just to kind of give a what's, what's up. And I know Council Eads and I were sharing an email on it to discuss, you know, what's the plan going forward for the intersection of, of Tuttle and Middle and what they're playing, you know, what they're planning for it is. So I think it might be helpful for everybody to get a, it doesn't have to be an extensive, you know, full workout, but at least something they can answer questions and, and give the council more detail on it, so I've got that request in as well.
Do we know, they might not have planned this far ahead yet, but do we know, are they going to shut the bridge on Tuttle down completely? Or is it gonna be a one-lane thing, they do one lane at a time?
No to both of those things.
Yeah, yeah, I think...
Never mind, you answer.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be operational, at least similar to probably the Bucknum Road project that just took place, where they would shut off half and, and control, control access there versus say, for instance, Johnson Road, which is a less, you know, it's not as, is not as much of a, of a, of an artery as, as Tuttle Road is, so. But there will be delays and you may see that there'll be overnight work, where they may do shutdowns and things along those lines, but not a full, you know, 24-hour-a-day, 24-by-7 type of, type of situation.
Throw traffic lights up and do a one-lane thing?
That's, that's what we anticipate.
I looked at their plan and it's pretty cool because they are building the bridge north of the current bridge, so basically the entire thing will be usable except for that time where they're paving, I guess, the on and off ramp portions of it, and then other than that it'll be open completely. So hopefully it has like a minimal traffic impact, even less than Bucknum Road.
Yeah, we hope so.
Yeah.
It's, you know, from a public safety side of it, I know we are, you know, being aware from that side with, with Yarmouth and Falmouth as well for responding on 88 and bidirectionally as well, so. But that's pretty much all I have, seeing Madam Chair, so happy for any questions or if you have any follow-ups, I'm happy to address those in the future too.
We know where to find you. Oh, just another stop sign question, you know? Do we know if it's before, during, or after on the Tuttle-Middle four-way with the bridge?
That, that I do not know.
Okay.
That's one of the areas that I'd like to have clarified as well, and I think it'd be helpful with, with a visit from, from MDOT.
I think we discussed maybe doing it all in one meeting if possible, so that we could talk about the larger project in that area, just for efficiency sake, right? Sounds good.
But I do know that, like, all three projects are on the 25 work plan for MDOT. It's just a question of, you know, for the roundabout, it's obviously the funding, and we need our good friends in Washington to...
Pony up.
Pony up, start scratching checks. And then, yeah, and then Tuttle Road is just a huge one to get done as well. Millbrook's fairly much a plug-and-play, it's a larger box culvert that they're looking to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, next up we have public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone here who would like to come chat? What? All right, there is no one here who wants to talk to us sadly. Okay, so then next up we will hit legislation and policy. With legislation and policy, there is always the opportunity for public comment per Article 2, Section 7 of the town charter. There will be an opportunity for a public comment on each item on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. We have a wildly exciting agenda and first item, 25-021, to reappoint William Longley as Code Enforcement Officer and Dan Small as alternate from April 1st, 2025 to March 31st, 2026. This is something that we do annually, even though it happens on April 1st, I assure you that it is not a joke. No April Fools and, yeah, I think re- reappointing the Code Enforcement Officer of a year, of the year, right, is something I feel great about.
It's all move.
Just really quickly, really quickly, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on Mr. Longley's amazingness? No, okay, we will close public comment. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote? All those in favor, unanimous, Brenda, congratulations, Mr. Longley. Okay, that concludes legislation and policy. Up next is new business. I'm going to start with my left, Mr. Eads. What?
Matt, I really, I was talking to Ronnie earlier, all the budgets that we've done over the years, and I'll let Ronnie say more about it, but I really enjoyed, the format was a little bit different, it was well done, it's great to have Hone back, and that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Great.
This book is very well put together. I mean, I've been here for 18 of these now and this is one of the easiest ones to go through and I just, and I commented to Leanne, she's done a...
19, Ronnie.
Really, yeah, 19, 18 and a half, Mike, thank you. But, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's great and she, if I can just follow up on that. It's, yeah, we've had a little bit of a grind and she's just amazing to get that to where, where we're at and full disclosure, we started out, we were at 17% of an increase. And we both put on our little green shades.
Thank you.
Sharp pencils, trying to get it down and it's a lot of work to get there, but she was amazing to work to get that and it's a, it's a whole team effort and, you know, worked with department heads and said, hey, this is what we're looking to make this change, and they were just great with that. But she, yeah, cleans a grinder and really grateful to have her on board and just, yeah, really great team, but thanks for that.
So this will be the last time that I say this outside of the last few meetings, but on this Wednesday, March 12th, from 6:30 to 8:30 right here in the council chambers, there'll be, the LCC is hosting a workshop gathering about forest and field landowners, open house. It's geared more towards the larger landowners, but there's a lot in there for anybody who has any interest in, you know, conservation, in what's going on in the forests, what's going on in your backyard, et cetera. They'll have some pretty interesting conversa, or presentations on, you know, the forest management guidelines in Cumberland, how forester can help you meet your management goals, how to deal with invasive species on your land, conserving your land for future generations with CCLT. Then they'll also have tables afterwards where they'll have different experts that can, you know, talk to you about different topics, including, you know, introduction to forestry, for Maine birds, partnering, partnering with the Shebegan Cumberland Land Trust, introduction, introduction to the Cumberland Trail Network, climate change and forest resilience, forest management 101, creating and managing a home orchard, protecting agricultural land and managing for grassland birds. Some pretty awesome topics there, if you're able to make it. I'll be right here in council chambers from 6:30 to 8:30 on Wednesday, the 12th. I think that's all I have.
Councilor Douglas?
If you want another fun activity to join in on from 6:30, no, 7 o'clock. The building committee meeting is meeting again on the 12th, this coming Wednesday. I will be there with my hat on, that's all.
Councilor Veil?
I'm good.
Councilor Thorson?
Well... Use up all your words there. All right, Bob, I got some. Yeah, landowner stuff that Councilor Ragoon talked about, piggyback on that. The orchard's still looking for people and the invasive subcommittee is looking for people. The LCC's invasive subcommittee like helps manage town land, but, and we talked about this before when the LCC came and did, talked about the forest management plan and stuff, but it's all nice when you are, you know, pumping out the cash and the work to manage invasives in the public spaces, only to have private landowner invasives just completely undo all of that work. And it's, it is a battle and it's gonna be a battle for decades and it's never gonna go away. And like, I encourage you to go to the town website and go to the LCC's page because they have really good resources, really detailed photos on how to identify invasives in your yard. Even, you don't even have to be like some sprawling landowner, like I have all sorts of knotweed and buckthorn and I found a bittersweet choking out one of my trees yesterday that I didn't know about because all the leaves have fallen and now it's easy to see them, but they're there and it takes work, but if you want to just like beat the crap out of something, you can go out there and just get rid of all your invasives and you're helping the environment and you're helping town forests and all that stuff while still having some fun destroying something, for a good reason. So that's something that's available. And if you want to do it on a larger scale with some free training, some like-minded people to do it with, then join the invasive subcommittee, go out in the forest and take care of them. Let's see, what else? So Christina talked about the bills that are up and testifying and getting involved and sending that email and I'm, so preface that by saying, I have quit Facebook, I'm done with it because it's frustrating, but anyways, so what I'm saying is I'm not gonna be there anymore, like trying to get people to get involved and like sharing things that are going on, be like, oh, you have a problem with dogs and dog poop and, you know, getting attacked by dogs at Twinbrook? Send an email because it's not really doing anything. I'm like, we're not receiving emails, people aren't really speaking up about it outside of social media, which is fine, it's a place to vent or whatever, but please like communicate with us because we can't like be trolling Facebook for comments and add that to the public record, that's not how that works. So if you are experiencing something in town that is affecting your life or the lives of your children and your pets, please, like town council@cumberlandmain.com, like send an email and explain what's going on, even if it's a sentence, like it doesn't have to be some big spiel, just let us know what's going on so that we can actually do something about it, because those are like the official communication channels and it'll be on the public record and it can be, it can be there, it can be there in the minutes and it, people can go back and look at it and understand why certain decisions were made the way they were, because there was public involvement and a concern that was brought forward. And you can't do that just in the abyss of the internet. So that's that plug and that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Cup?
Like $20 for the 4H food pantry, once again. The town manager stole a lot of my thunder on the manager's report. Thursday night, the water will be shut off west of Route 100 from Blackstrap. It's only gonna affect one resident and the fire barn and the community building, and then I think it's only for like three hours. This is just doing a pressure test under the turnpike, no big deal, just trying to make everybody aware of that. And to his comment about complaints on tax bills, I live in the west end, I got my tax bills four days ago. And I've had a lot of people that have asked me, if I make out my check and I put it in the mail and it doesn't get there for two weeks, am I guilty of something? So, I mean, and I said, people are gonna realize that it's not us, it's snail mail. I mean, you know, so be patient, I mean, everybody will look at it and go from there. I mean, certainly if you come in 30 days late, they're not gonna say the mail was 30 days, but two weeks is not exuberant, the way they operate. I missed the fireman's banquet because I wasn't aware it was going on. I don't have an iPad and I know Whitney, you're working on it. You got it? Perfect. I'm missing a lot of information that's going on here in town, so hopefully we'll get that thing up and running. But I look forward, I've been on this council for 18 and a half years and the fireman's banquet was one of the events that I always enjoyed going to, it was a good time, and I'm sorry I missed it, so...
Sorry, you weren't the only one.
Yeah, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I went to the public safety banquet and it was awesome.
It always is, I mean, yeah.
It was, it was, it was, it was great. I was just gonna mention just general, generally, I mean, I think that, I mean, I live on Route 9, so I like constantly hear them going by my house, but it was what I found to be really kind of special, which is the storytelling and just hearing on both the fire EMS side as well as on the police side, like just some of the stories that kind of come to life that we, you know, it's different when you read about it in a newspaper versus hearing the officer or seeing the responding staff, kind of what they were, what they went through, you know, and that was really, really special, I thought, and it was really fun. And we have another, another, we have upcoming budget workshops, March 17th, the 24th, the 31st, April 14th and April 28th. And that is, and we have a comprehensive plan meeting on, on Thursday and we'll hopefully, the, the team will come back with an RFP hopefully, which we'll see, I think, as Matt alluded at the end of the month. That is all I have. I would love a motion for adjournment unless anyone else has anything to say.
Give you a motion.
Okay, motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Call for a vote? Unanimous, Brenda. Thank you, everybody. Yee-haw!
Yee-haw!